Come on, Chris, that's showing off.
Vacation's coming to an end. I gotta finish them. I gotta finish them because when I go home, I'm inside and I can't smoke at home. It's almost over.
Well, I trust from the photographs and everything else that you've enjoyed yourself, so.
It's been nice down here.
That's all that matters.
My father wants to know, why are you coming home? I said, because I have to work. He's like, you can't work from there? I said, I suppose I can, Dad. I said, but I got things I gotta do. My son, if my son wasn't having a baby, I think we might, I think we might be staying for another, another while longer, but he's having a baby in the next week or so, so.
Oh, really? I did not know that. Congratulations. Another one.
Yep, a boy. This one's a boy, so. See? One more golf lesson, then I leave. We better put a little, uh, put a little pick-me-up in the Boston sports teams.
Last night wasn't good for the Bruins, or two nights ago, whenever it was, I forget.
We went to the Pats game down here. That was an embarrassment.
Well, it wasn't as, wasn't as bad as the following week.
No, no, that was rough. I'm surrounded. I don't, I don't know where they came from, but all the people at this, at the place I'm staying, you know, the house here, the condo, I never knew it, but everybody, everywhere I go, there's Buffalo Bills banners and two guys I play with on the golf course had Bills flags. I'm like, what, what's going on down here? I liked it when it was all the Montrealers and Quebecers, but they're not coming down because of the COVID.
They're not allowed to leave, right?
It's getting home, it's a problem for those guys, I think. They, they have to, to get home is a problem. But I've met more, I've met more kids down here, kids being like thirty-five, thirty, thirty-five-year-old kids down here, working for three or four months, just remotely. They don't have to be at home, so they're down here and it's everywhere. It's crazy. I used to be the, I used to be the young crowd down here. Nothing more. I like old fart.
Wow. That's, uh, that's natural aging, Chris. It's not, uh, that's not COVID-related.
But I, I know, but I've never seen so many, uh, so many young, young adults and everything just living here. It's kind of crazy. But we're ready, I'm ready for the cold. I gotta come home and be in the cold, but.
Uh, I don't know if you're ready for the cold we've had over the last week or so.
No.
Nobody's ready for that.
Hey, gang.
Hello.
Mary.
You having fun, Chris? Are we ever gonna see you again?
I was just telling David, my father told me, who happens to be my kind of sort of work partner and boss, he said, oh, why are you, why are you coming home again?
Oh, my gosh.
I said, because you're about to have another great-grandchild. It's the only reason. My wife is in the other room. She's crying. She's packing.
Oh. How long have you been down there this time?
Um, a month.
Okay, is that the longest?
Yeah, this is the longest.
That's so, yeah.
So we're I would stay. I mean, I would stay. I don't have to be home. I can work from anywhere, but, you know, baby coming and
Right.
All sorts of other stuff up there we have to get done, so.
How is Meredith feeling? Okay?
Yeah, she's good. We talked, we, uh, we FaceTime. I don't know, I don't know if FaceTime costs me anything, but if it does, I'm gonna be broke when I get home. We're FaceTiming two babies twice a day. We got a morning FaceTime and an afternoon FaceTime, evening FaceTime for both of them, so. But she's good. She looks great. She's doing good.
Excellent.
The, uh, the boy is, the boy is doing his job. He's building the second nursery and everything else, so.
Wow.
They're ready for the baby. Yeah, they're good.
This is gonna be really short and sweet, right?
Well, we would think so. Well, I don't know about our meeting, but we would think the, uh,
Our side, yeah.
That, and unfortunately, the select board did not obey the request to, uh, to be, to be here at six-thirty.
Oh, dear.
Uh, Chris is here, I'm here.
They know it's at six-thirty, right?
They do, yeah.
All right. Yeah. We have a Hall of Fame meeting at seven, so I gotta bug out right after.
Soon as we get a, a third person from our board, we can start. And it, well, yeah, we don't have a quorum, so I can't even begin the.
Right. Can we open our meeting so that we're ready? Does that make any sense or no?
Yep.
Yeah, so Hillary could do that.
Um, I don't need to read the script, right? Because you'll do that.
I'll read the script.
Okay, so just roll call the first school committee portion of the meeting to come to order. Okay, um, Natasha?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Hillary, yes.
Hi, Mauro.
Yes.
You're, you're not being, can't hear you, Mauro. You're not muted, so that's not the issue.
You can always call in also.
Ma, can you hear us? Yep, okay.
All right, Justine is on, so I'll be, at least begin by reading the script.
My apologies for the delay.
No, no worries. As a preliminary matter, this David Gavin, Chair of the Managed Select Board, permit me to confirm that all members or persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. I see Jeff is signing on as we're going, so. Chris, can you hear me?
Yes.
Jeff, can you hear me?
Yes.
Justine, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and staff, I'm not gonna go through everybody. I'll just ask Greg if you can hear me and Megan.
Yes.
All righty. And too many anticipated speakers. So, good afternoon or good evening, rather. This, the open meeting of the select board is being conducted via Zoom. Everybody on the agenda will be participating remotely and there will be public comment provided by Zoom. There are two public hearings this evening, one at seven fifteen and one at seven thirty, and of course, the public will be permitted to speak at those as well. Board would like to hear public comments during that section, and if there's further action that is required by the board, I'll add the matter as appropriate to the, to a forthcoming agenda. Depending upon the comment, we may, if we're able, within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on an unanticipated matter. Please note that while an option for, uh, well, that paragraph always gets me, but, uh, everybody's participating via, uh, via Zoom, and this is a courtesy for the public, and the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless it's otherwise required by law. The agenda was posted on the town's website and it identifies how the public may join us. Please note that we are recording this meeting and that, uh, all of the attendees are participating by video conference. Therefore, be aware that other people may be able to see you and that take, and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may indeed be captured by the recording. The materials for this meeting, except for any executive session materials, which there are none, are available on Board Docs, and we recommend the members of the public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs unless I otherwise know. Turning to the first item on the agenda, but before I do, let me cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I'll introduce each speaker as I can, and after they conclude their remarks, we'll go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. If you're, anybody participating via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking, and remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the floor is yielded to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with, with other members, please do so through me. I've taken care to identify yourself. There are matters with public comment tonight during the public hearings, and, uh, the rules for that will be that after the, each of the members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. I'll ask first for members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses, and we'll call on each of you and afford a maximum of three minutes for any comments. And, uh, we will accept public comments, uh, via Zoom for this evening. So having said that, I still don't see that Armin has joined us, but we're going to proceed so that we can get through the first portion of the meeting. Oh, are you here?
Yeah.
Hi, Armin. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, I didn't realize we started at six-thirty. I thought it was seven.
That's okay. Anyway. We have public comments on the agenda. If there are public comments now, I'll welcome any or that may have comments about what we're going to begin to discuss, uh, subsequent. But if there are none, then we can have, hold the rest of the public comments until after. So if anybody has any comments about school committee matters, feel free to speak up public comments. Hearing none, we'll move on and we will open our meeting, joint meeting with the school committee with the intention tonight to, um, appoint a new member to fill a position that opened up due to resignation. Um, as everybody knows, we, uh, published through Facebook and other social media, as well as on the town website and through whatever media we possibly could, the fact that this opening was available and invited interested candidates to submit to us a letter of interest as well as a, uh, little brief background on themselves. And, uh, fortunately, I guess for her, Ma, uh, Mauro Hogan is the only person to have submitted a letter of interest. Fortunate, I guess, for us is that we will not have a very difficult job this evening. So I will open up the floor. Uh, Hillary and I discussed how we would proceed with this, not knowing at the time that we would have just one candidate, so I think I'll still follow the same guidelines, but, Mauro, you can open up with a brief comment about yourself, why you're interested in, uh, being appointed, and then we can just proceed from there, and the school committee can ask questions, and the board, if we have any questions, can ask questions, and then we'll proceed to a, to a vote. You can unmute yourself, Mauro, and go right ahead. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, well, I, I put in my letter of interest, um, to, to become a member of the school committee again. I was, for those who don't know who I am, I was on the school committee, um, a few years ago. I served two, uh, separate one-year terms. Uh, let's see, I think that was nine, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, and then, or maybe it was two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty for two terms. And, um, so I've been, you know, I've done a lot of stuff on the school committee, um, and then last year, um, was my off year. And I did a bunch of work on the solar project. Um, I worked with David Gavin and, um, some others on that, and then I also worked on this, the commu- communications subcommittee. Just finishing out some of the work that I worked, um, previously before I ended my term. Uh, this year, I have been working on the high school school council. And if, unfortunately, if I do get, um, approved here, I will no longer be able to be on that because it's a conflict of interest. So they will definitely be looking for, um, a parent, um, rep, uh, since I was the only parent rep for the high school school council. So anybody that's interested in that should contact Chuck Karajanis. They're in great need of parents. Anyway, um, I really have enjoyed being on the school committee, um, over the years, and, um, I am greatly looking forward to possibly to working with Brian Haas and anybody else that, uh, of the, the administration and along with, um, the current school committee members. Um, so it's, I, I really look forward to kind of, just kind of slotting in where Lydia had, um, resigned and where she, where she was already in there on the subcommittees that she worked on. I have been on both of those subcommittees, so I kind of know what, what's what, so. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Muted, David.
Hillary, take it away. You can lead your group with questions and answers and whatever.
All right, thank you. Um, so I'm so grateful that Mauro has, um, is interested in taking this on. Um, I, my question that I had originally intended on asking if we had, um, multiple candidates was primarily designed to assess what sort of familiarity a candidate had with the school committee. Um, because we have a lot going on, and I really wanted somebody that would be able to jump on board and help us, um, move forward over these next six months, and so, um, Mauro's experience with the school committee is fantastic. Um, I'm really grateful that, uh, we'll have somebody that understands the purview of the school committee. And what's actually within the, like, what falls under the role of the school committee. And, uh, so my question was designed to, uh, learn more about, uh, interested parties' familiarity with that and ability to work with our group. Um, and I think that's really important is that we work together effectively, um, so that we can move forward. And, uh, Mauro has experience working with many of the folks on the school committee. Um, so I think we, I think we can, uh, I'm confident in, in that side. But, uh, we can go around and see what other questions people have. Um, Elizabeth?
Thanks, Hillary, and, um, welcome, Mauro. Mauro, we're really happy to have you, and, um, I think I'm the only one on the school committee who hasn't worked with you personally. Um, but I'm very excited to start, uh, so the only question I have for you, I guess, is what are you excited about jumping into for these next few months?
I'm definitely excited to, um, kind of continue the work on the policies. That's one of the subcommittees, um, and I know Lydia did a lot of work, so I'm looking forward to kind of, um, pushing all that through and then, um, working with Natasha, um, on the negotiation, um, uh, subcommittee also, um, and then whatever else needs to be done. You know, learning more about what this year has to do, you know, what kind of budgeting issues. I'm looking forward to, um, our big joint meeting in February. Um, that's always, um, a big, um, it's always fun to, everybody all getting together, so, um, it's too bad, I'm assuming that it's not gonna be in person because that's always more fun, but, so those are the, I think, the major things, um, that I'm looking forward to.
That's really great. Well, thank you so much for stepping up and doing this. I'm really excited to get to know you better and to work with you for these months. Thanks.
Thank you, me too.
Natasha?
Um, so I, first of all, I just wanted to thank you and for for under current times to still put your name out there and actually having served on the school committee, being willing to to jump in and help right in into the deep end with no floaties and help us this, the remainder of this and this year. So Mauro, I mean, you and I go back to working on the Green Meadow School Council together. So I'm very familiar with, you know, working with you and how effective you you can be in your passion for education. I know in CPAC, we certainly, you know, have have liaised on with you and it's been it's been great. And and also understanding your your passion there as well personally and in dealing with areas that have come up. I would love that you would have an opportunity to get to hear more from Jeff Franti as well because I know that previously engaged more with Carol Gayhan. So this will be another new, a new person maybe to become more familiar with, which will be exciting. I love that you used fun a lot to describe activities regarding the school committee because that is not often how we hear our activities referred to. So I'm excited about that you think it's fun. So yay, any more fun we can have injected into any of our processes is a great thing. I also just wanted to take a moment to just thank, you know, everyone who's thought about even considering the appointment, who maybe didn't feel like the commitment was something that people could set forward to because it's a lot. And and so I don't have any other questions that I don't know about you already because I, you know, have worked with you. And and again, you've stated you've, you're familiar with the subcommittees already. And just, you know, just being available, let me know if you, you know, need anything. And I'm look forward to picking up and continuing on in a positive direction.
Thanks, Natasha.
Mary?
Yeah, ditto, a lot of what has already been said, but I am just so grateful, Mauro, given where we are and that especially the last couple of years that you were willing and optimistic about about applying that you, you know, you didn't go do it begrudgingly. You really, you know, you really wanted to do it. So I'm so grateful for that and the the learning curve that that you don't have to experience is is also fantastic. And I have worked with you as a school committee member. And you've, there have been numerous times where I came in thinking one thing on an issue and you brought a different perspective and so changed my mind in that. So I really value value your opinion. So thank you again and look forward to working with you.
Thanks, Mary. Um, I wanted to add one more thing, and I also think that your experience as a parent with children in the district and particularly with children at the high school is really helpful. Since a lot of us have kids that aren't in Maynard schools currently, that's really helpful. And I appreciate that. And then I didn't know if Brian wanted to ask anything or say anything.
I don't actually have any questions that I need to ask, but I'm glad that you've applied and look forward to working with you for the next several months.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, David.
All right. Thanks, Hillary, and thank you, members of the school committee. My comments before the rest of the board have opportunity to to ask any questions that they may have. I wanted to first express thank you to Mauro for stepping forward to make this somewhat easy for all of us. And also to express, as I have a number of times, that despite the ultimate outcome back a year and a half ago, when Mauro, myself and the rest of the group that Mauro mentioned sat down to talk about the 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 issues pertaining to the solar farm, I was so impressed with the the way that Mauro took her approach as the representative of the educational aspect of that project and really drove it home and asked a lot of questions that were driven specifically to the educational piece of that project. And helped us, I think, as we went along in the process to to make the right decision that we made at the time relative to which direction we wanted to go in. And for that, I saw her dedication to the schools. I saw her dedication to the children of the of the district. And I was, as I say, really extremely impressed. So Mauro, thank you again. And I will now turn it over to members of the board for any questions that they may have, if any. Chris, I'll go to you first.
No, I don't have any any questions. I just want to say thank you tomorrow for coming back to where she was in the past and say hello. Nice, nice to see you again.
Thanks, Chris.
Good luck. It was, it was, it was a pleasure working with you in the past, and I'm sure it will be now. So all the best to you.
Thank you.
Again.
Jeff?
No, no question. I'll just add, you know, this is a great opportunity to have a positive impact on our town. I'm glad you stepped up, especially it's a, as we're about to discuss in a difficult budget year for both the schools and the town side, especially given the increased healthcare costs due to COVID. But it's great to see somebody apply with the experience that you have, and I wish you the best a lot.
Thanks, Jeff.
Justine?
I pretty much echo most of what everybody else has said this evening. I think that I obviously want to thank you for for coming back. And I enjoyed working with you when you were on school committee before, and I look forward to collaborating again. And I do think that it is very important that that you have students in the district. And I think that that brings a perspective that that is very valuable, kind of like the boots in the ground type of thing, that you kind of see what your kids tell you is going on that you that other people might not see. So I think that that's, that's very helpful. And I also want to thank you for staying involved, even when you weren't on the school committee and still staying involved in the schools and being on the high school council. And so so thank you for all of your, all of your volunteerism.
Thanks, Justine.
Armin?
Um, it's so many things that I want to echo. And I think that Mara has has a lot to offer. And this is a very timely situation when you want to have someone that's hit the ground running and she has the experience that's necessary at this point in time. And I think that the rest of the school committee that has worked with her in the past, I think it'll, it'll benefit from having her knowledge, experience, and also to Justine's point, having, you know, children in school that understand what it, what it takes. And and throughout the years, Mara, even though she wasn't on the committee anymore, she stayed involved in other, you know, committees and other ways of, you know, keeping, you know, ears to the ground when it comes to what's going on in town. So we appreciate the fact that you stepped up again and we welcome you back.
Thanks, Armin.
Hillary, do you want to offer a motion?
Um, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Mauro Hogan to complete the term that ends on June 30th, 2022.
The school committee?
For school committee, sorry.
I second.
Um, so we do roll call vote for school committee?
We will see if there's any other nominations, which I doubt there will be. And and then we can just do a roll call for the school committee and we'll do a roll call for the board.
Okay.
We also need to, real quick, do we also, according to our motion, it says to authorize digital, the use of digital signatures are approved. Do we need that?
That's good practice. I don't know if the school committee does that, though.
Um, we can. Um, so I guess I make a motion to appoint Mauro Hogan to complete the term that ends on June 30th, 2022 to the Maynard School Committee and use of digital signatures as needed.
I think we have a motion already on the table, so we make procedural wise, we may
Just a friendly amendment to it.
Amendment. Yeah. I think it's just.
Get approval from whoever seconded it.
I I did. So do you want to just amend that motion?
Okay, so I amend the first motion to include the use of digital signatures as needed.
Okay, second.
Okay.
Go ahead with your roll call.
Okay, Natasha?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And Hillary, yes.
And for the select board, Chris Silva?
Yes.
Jeff Swanberg?
Yes.
Justine St. John?
Yes.
Armin Deere-Percurian?
Yes.
And David Gavin is a yes as well. Congratulations, Mauro. Welcome back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I ask a question of procedural wise? Because I know we have a school committee meeting tomorrow. Mauro, is Mauro, Joanna, I see you on there.
She's officially on as long as she gets sworn in tomorrow.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Is there, is that, is that the plan to get you sworn in and then?
I, I can go. Becky, hi, Becky.
I think Colleen and I have made plans, we're either going to go over to her house or my house. So she's either coming to town hall or I'm going to the school. And I have the slip all prepared.
Okay.
And we'll just, all right, we'll contact Mauro to get her in to town hall.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I'm free. I'm free. So that's fine.
Also.
Tomorrow.
All right.
Um, can I say one more thing?
Yeah, sure.
Um, I know there was some interest over the last few weeks of people who asked questions about what was involved in being on the school committee, whether time commitment was would be, and expressed interest, but maybe weren't comfortable with the amount of obligation associated with that. But I just wanted to remind people that there's a whole lot of boards and groups that need members that have, you know, the CPAC board, the school councils, the human relations committee. I think, I think there's a few other ones I've seen that are looking for volunteers. So there's a lot of other options, too, if people are interested.
I think Vincom also has a member opening there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Hillary, for pointing that out. It's, I know it's a hard time for people, but I think public services definitely has a lot of opportunities there.
Just appreciate that people are asking the questions that, you know, that there is interest and that. So hopefully they'll continue, you know, doing one of these other roles because it's a good way to work yourself in also.
And I say it all the time, Maynard is driven by our volunteers. And without volunteers, we would not be able to do half, if not more than half the stuff that we do. So thank you to everyone who volunteers.
And as Mauro said and Natasha pointed out, it is fun, so.
Yes, it is.
Right. Super fun.
Yep. Okay.
Dream, dream this.
You can close out your meeting, Hillary.
Okay, um, so a motion to adjourn the school committee portion of the meeting?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
And me, yes.
All right, you are all welcome to stay. I know Mary said she had some other event to attend.
But I think I'll try getting on at the other end.
I'm sure you're tremendously excited to watch our meeting, so.
I'll be staying.
It's important.
Feel free to.
David, by the way, if I knew there was so much fun joining the school committee, maybe I would have thought about doing that.
I mean, you know, you lost out. I'm just saying, you know.
You still can.
Yeah.
Right.
There will be an opening.
So I'm going to go back to public comments, just in case anybody that has joined us since we had the opening at 6:30. If anybody wants to make a comment from the public on any topic they might be interested in, now would be the time. Otherwise, we will move on. I just want to make sure that nobody missed their opportunity to speak. And I'm looking and I don't see anybody with their electronic hand up or their, oh, Natasha.
Yes, I actually had public comment, not school committee related, that I wanted to share with the select board.
Please.
Okay, so I attended the Board of Health meeting recently, and I shared this feedback with them. But as the appointing body to the Board of Health, I wanted to relay directly to the select board some of the feedback that I had conveyed to them for for your purposes as well. I intended to send an email, but I thought public comment for me better suited my my goal. So Natasha Rivera, Nine Turner Road, as a resident, I wanted to to thank you. And this is, this was directed to the select, to the Board of Health. But again, just to reiterate, I wanted to thank the Board of Health for their time and commitment to our community, often under the most unforgiving circumstances. I'm extremely grateful for our new full-time health agent to Maynard, which was long overdue during a pandemic, who was able to immediately work to get a vaccine clinic to Maynard. I personally benefited from the booster from at the January 4th clinic. And I look forward to future clinics that will offer boosters to children 12 to 15 years old who were unable to participate and benefit at that recent time. In addition to extending my appreciation for their work as volunteers to our community, I wanted to also extend some constructive feedback on what I feel is not what the Board of Health should be focused on. There are members, namely Lisa, who often invoke the media as a critical medium when bringing justification to a reason to not support a matter up for discussion, such as mask mandates. I, the public looks to the Board of Health for reassurances that their opinions and deliberations are void of such politicized jargon. I asked that the Board of Health consider how these types of commentaries land with the community and the detrimental harm that they do to the Board of Health's credibility when doing so. Continuously highlighting the low national vaccination ration, vaccination rate as justification for reasoning not to take action in Maynard sometimes seems highly inappropriate and outside of their purview. Additionally, I asked that the Board of Health please refrain from citing media publications that are not provided to the public, as they often refer to on a whim and are nothing the public have been provided access to when attempting to understand their dissenting opinions. I asked that the Board of Health remember that materials used during public meetings are are subject to open meeting laws. I also asked that the Board of Health consider what their message is, what their message is and when they're sending, when their conversations on health matters primarily focus on enforcement as opposed to the concerns the community continuously expresses in cases of health matters and well-being. And I wasn't able to stay for the whole meeting last week because we did have a separate meeting. And I understand the outcome was was different in the mask mandate discussions. However, I do, the part that I did hear, I was continuously disappointed in the condescending tone that sometimes came across and when when feedback was shared by the public. So I, as again, as the select board and the appointing body, I wanted to relay my feedback and concerns to you. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. If that wasn't like an official statement, if you could drop it to Town Hall, just so it could be added as part of the minutes, that'd be helpful.
Will do.
We need to get it to Becky. Any other public comments? Looking through. I don't see any.
Uh, David, I, this is Lisa.
Oh, Lisa, yes.
I have a public comment.
Uh, I would like. Can you state your, just for the record, and I should have asked Natasha, but can you give me, give us your home address?
Yeah, Nine Garfield Street.
Thank you.
I did provide my information, so.
Okay, sorry. Sorry if I missed it. Okay, thank you, Lisa. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I would, you know, I know we're going to have a health meeting, though I know that, again, some people are, you know, perhaps disappointed with sometimes if I reference things, facts and such. But I did want to make a comment about Jeff Swanberg and his select Swanberg Facebook page. He is actually using his position as a select board on Facebook, on social media, to slander and undermine the Board of Health's decision-making to the public. I do not feel that he should be using his select board position on social media as a platform to attack other town offices. I find this behavior highly unprofessional, unethical, distasteful and self-serving. I understand he has very specific viewpoints and he has some type of an agenda, but I think that should be shared like on a private citizens Facebook page where he can represent himself as not as a town agent. I just don't believe in attacking other boards behind their backs where they don't have a chance in the appropriate public forum to respond. And I'm also wondering how he has suddenly become the leading expert on the COVID-19 pandemic and protection of public health and has all of the answers and the solutions. From my limited research on his professional background, he appears to work for a pharmaceutical company that does not have any work related to COVID-19 or the pandemic, including vaccines, medical research. I don't see that he's affiliated with OSHA or has extensive knowledge of respiratory protection. So I'm just trying to figure out why all that information is. And I, you know, I can tell you, there's quite a few inaccuracies in his January 6 posts. And if he posts a lot of information where, speaking of where Natasha is just referencing, like when people say things and there's nothing cited to support that information. I mean, he's commenting as a select board member. So if you're going to make comments, like wearing a mask significantly reduces the trans of transmission from when social distancing. So if you're gonna make comments uh like wearing a mask significantly reduces the trans of transmission from when social distancing can't be maintained, or you're fourteen times less likely to die if you're, you know, vaccinated versus not vaccinated, I mean, those are comments that you're being, you know, you're conveying as a public, you know, in a public forum as a town official. So if you're gonna post all that stuff on social media and you're gonna try to undermine the Board of Health in a public forum, uh A, at least have the courtesy to cite all your references and uh again, uh perhaps think about voicing those opinions rather than on social media in a public forum that's uh appropriate and professional. Thank you.
Thank you Lisa, and I I will give Jeff an opportunity if he desires to uh make any comments he wishes to make. Uh but what I would, I guess what I want to emphasize uh before we move on, because we will have a later discussion on this whole thing, is um I I I hope we don't uh devolve ourselves into personal issues uh on on you know, matters that I think everybody cares about one another as much as possible and has their own thoughts on where things are going. And I just really want uh not only our town, but our society to become more caring for one another and and how we we talk about each other and for each other and with each other and that we can become a community as opposed to, you know, arguing with one another repeatedly over whatever topic it may be. Um so I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that we can, Lisa, I'll I'll give you a chance to respond, but I'm hopeful that we can that we can uh you know, move forward as a community and as a as a society. And this has to end, we can't have this back and forth uh frustration and anger with one another, but.
Well, you know, the negativity that Mr. Swanberg is projecting, and again, he's um, you know, we don't go on social media and undermine the select board um and their decisions. So I just, I'm just telling you, it's inappropriate, it's it's a very negative way to conduct yourself, it's unprofessional and it's highly negative and it's polarizing and to find things like this without us even knowing about them, that's why I'm bringing it up because I do, I'm I'm kind of tired of Mr. Swanberg uh continuously kind of attacking us and undermining our credibility, our decision-making. Um, I know he, like I said, I know he has an agenda and I I'm really very disappointed to see this on social media and you know, maybe we all need a little uh refresher on ethics and uh how social media, how we project, you know, how as town has town representatives, how we should be behaving on social media so that we don't continuously have all this negative stuff being, you know, projected to the public without you know, talking about it in a public forum other than a select Swanberg page, that's all I'm saying, so.
Thank you. Jeff, do you have anything you want to say?
Uh just briefly, I don't believe I've broken anything uh any ethical rules whatsoever, I'll I'll uh hold off on all their comments until we get to the appointed agenda item later.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments on any topic? I'm not seeing any hands raised, so we will move on to the uh and I'm keeping aware that with seven fifteen, we have that scheduled um um you know, public hearing, so Greg, go right ahead and uh begin with your town administrator report. I don't know if we'll get through the budgetary discussion that you wanted to have before seven fifteen, but we'll see.
Yeah, no, I'll be brief, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um I'll just touch on a couple of things. I, as always, I I welcome, I encourage, um I beg that the the public looks over the town administrative reports which are found on the town's website. Um, just a couple of things to highlight from it from this evening. Uh, there is a proposed joint meeting between the planning board and the SLUG board on February twenty second uh to hear from the metropolitan area planning, I'm getting it wrong, M A P C, it's the, it's the like the regional planning authority that helps out the town and number of our neighbors. Um and they've been working really hard on a powder mill corridor study and they would like to give its final presentation um or at least phase one of the study to those two bodies.
And that was February twenty second?
Twenty second.
Yeah, so members of the board, make sure your calendars are free. I think they said six thirty.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Greg.
Very good. Um, I also want to highlight another planning board meeting uh coming up on February ninth, which will uh cover the topic of home occupations uh which which I assume a lot of people don't know what that means. Um if you are curious, go to the town administration report, you can read a little bit of synopsis on it. Uh but if you do know what it means, it's probably important to you, so you can go to the planning board meeting on 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 uh February ninth. Um and one other thing to highlight, the town clerk's office, I'm really proud of them, they have uh done a little bit of modernization and they now offer online payments uh for a lot of their their permitting and applications. Um, uh as far as the budget status, it's only to admit that I don't have a comprehensive budget ready to submit to the SLUG board now. Um, I have less than forty-eight hours to get to get to the board, uh but you can see where I am with it. Um, anyway, I have a balanced budget, uh and I have explanations in the column. Um, if you open up some of those files that is attached to the board docs, you can see uh where I am with a lot of those things. And I covered most of this with the Budget Subcommittee recently as well. Um, I have a couple tweaks that I'll be making between now and Friday. Um, I also got the capital, the recommended capital improvement plan from the town's capital planning committee um which they they submitted to me, I take a look at it and and then we try to work together to get something to the SLUG board and ultimately to the town. I think we're in a good spot, um but I just have to finalize it before I get it to the SLUG board on Friday.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions from the board or comments about the town administrator's report?
Um, yeah, I got a, just a quick comment. Um, as you know, Greg, I very much appreciate and look forward to your report all the time and I take the time to kind of read it.
Good.
And um the only, the only thing is that this time around, I didn't get a chance to because I think it was submitted a little bit from my perspective, a little too late, so uh I didn't get a chance to kind of look into it until this morning, so.
It was, I thought I thought it was on the agenda when you passed it out to us on Wednesday.
Wasn't on Friday, it wasn't on Friday when it came out.
I'd say I saw it on Sunday night.
Sunday night, yeah, so that was a little, okay, anyway, but it's just that if it's possible um to for you to get that done a little quicker and earlier.
Hundred percent.
I know you have a lot on your plate, um don't don't take me the wrong way, because I know you handle a lot of things, so.
I appreciate that.
I look for, I look forward to reading your report, so I very much appreciate what you put together, so.
No, no, good point, and I I don't like anything not being, when I, when I leave for the weekend um and I hit send on to the town, to the SLUG board, it it's it's in there, so I don't know what happened on Friday. I didn't, I didn't work again on Sunday, my wife would, my wife would kill me, so it was, it was in there on Friday, who knows what happened?
I don't know why, I look forward to it on Friday, because I know, I I I take, I take it it became us, uh you know, one of those regular things that I look forward to it on Friday, because.
Yeah, I'm excited that you're excited and I'm sorry you didn't get it sooner.
All I know, all I know is that when I looked at it, it was there and uh so I was satisfied.
Good, okay.
I don't know.
Sorry about that, okay.
Give me an email sooner and then I'll I'll, if you, if you're like, oh, where is it, then I'll I'll get, I'll get back to you or text me or whatever.
And Greg, for the um uh for the release of the of your budget, you will just send a an email to the board with an attachment? Will that immediately become a public record at that point, or should we uh?
Yes, yes, I mean.
Will it, will it be posted anywhere for the for?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we, I think we usually fill it on the uh under the SLUG board page.
Okay.
And then it's uh, you know, that's how our webmaster, Dave Griffin, does it every year, if you, so you can look in past years and then you can see how it's how it's in there. But there's in all likelihood, there'll be a big difference between what's submitted on Friday and then
Yes.
a couple of weeks later, so it's more like a place marker, but it's, but it's, yes, it'll be, it'll be a public document, it'll be online.
I'm really asking that question for the benefit of those who are looking in, who might be interested in seeing it sooner, as soon as they possibly can.
Sure.
Uh, members, possibly members of the school committee and everything else that might want to see some of the detail.
Sure.
Uh, alright, um it is seven thirteen, we're close, um and I don't want to, you know what, we, although we have plotted, I'm sure that we want to um that we want to make about the Cesus, Cesus Contennial Committee, which is item number C under uh under appointments, but we probably can quickly discharge them and get that off of the uh the atomization on number five.
David, did you want to do the acceptance of minutes?
Well, we can do that too, that's pretty quick, isn't it? So um, so yeah, if there's, if there's a motion to accept the minutes of January fourth, we're good.
I'll move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of January fourth, twenty twenty-two, as shown, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
A second. Second.
Alright. Okay, so um we'll then uh any questions or comments about the minutes? We'll then take a roll call vote. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you, Justine, for sending us to that, which is very quick. Um. Alright, we now have a minute, so I will, I'll begin reading the uh the public hearing notice. We're gonna be there soon enough. Um, public meeting notice, this meeting is continued until Wednesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven fifteen PM, we're just, we're there now. Uh, notice is hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one sixty-six, that a public hearing will be held via Zoom. The petition and plan are being presented by the N Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy and Verizon for the purpose of obtaining a grant of location to install one new pole, number one eighty-seven slash six A Dix Road, Maynard. The public is welcome to attend via Zoom, a copy of this petition is filed with the town clerk and the SLUG board. So I will turn, do we have a representative from EverSource with us this evening or Verizon?
Yes. Yes, this is Christine Cosby from EverSource.
Hi Christine, welcome.
Thank you.
Um, feel free to give us a little bit of background about what the need is for the purpose of obtaining the grant of location and um then we'll move forward and then we'll ask the uh the board if they have any questions and the public.
Okay, um, yes, we're requesting a grant of location to install one new pole, one eighty-seven of six A on Dix Road. Um, and the purpose of that is um currently there's um a large wire span distance between the existing poles out there. So because of that, wire span distance, the wires are hanging low in between. So the purpose of putting in the new pole would be to raise all those wires up to um, you know, a better height.
Okay. Have there been any issues or complaints or concerns about the 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 way the poles have, or the way the wires are hanging?
Um, actually, I I I'm not quite sure, I'm thinking that something must have come through because it it came through to me that there was an issue that with the wires hanging low. So I don't know if, I don't know if it was a resident, I don't know if it was maybe Verizon. I I don't know if it was maybe EverSource um looking into um making sure that things are safe.
Mm-hmm.
So, but but it is, it is quite a span between the two poles.
Yep.
Usually, for the most part, we like our stands to be a hundred and twenty-five to four hundred and fifty feet between poles. And this span distance is roughly two hundred feet. And and if you, if you go out there, you could see that the, it's the lower, the wires are lower, that are um, you know, lower on the poles that that it hang, you know, that are low.
Yes. Okay, any questions from the board members? I don't see any, any questions from the po- comments from the public? Either raise your hand or feel free to speak up. And I don't hear anybody or see anybody. So with that, we can uh accept a motion if there is one from the board.
David, can I ask one question? Sorry.
Absolutely, yep.
Um, so, and this is just procedural thing that maybe Becky has, so I just want to make sure, so the abutters obviously have been notified if there's going to be a telephone pole in there, in their yard. Um, I'm just kind of looking at the Google map of it now, so I just wanted to make sure that that they're obviously aware.
Yes, others were notified.
Okay.
Did you know, they they were notified of the public hearing and, you know, what was proposed for the petition.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And again, public, you're free to speak. And hearing none, is there a motion?
I will move to approve a grant location to install one new pole, number one eight seven slash six A Dix Road, Maynard. The petition and plan are being presented by N Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy and Verizon for the purpose of obtaining a grant location, authorizing use of digital signature if approved.
Okay.
Motion's made in second, and any further comments? Hearing none, roll call, Krista Silva.
Yes.
Justine St. John.
Yes.
Jeff Swanberg.
Yes.
Armand Dear Vicarian.
Yes.
And David Gavin is a yes as well. Now I will call a roll call to call an end to the public hearing at seven nineteen. Um. Krista Silva?
Yes.
Yes, and the.
Yes, and the call.
Yep, Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Alright, that gives us about ten minutes to get through some of the uh quick hits and we'll go now to item number five on the agenda, which is appointments.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we will go to the first one, item A is the MBTA Advisory Board and uh Chester Osborne, I saw him online, he volunteered, thank you, Che- Chester. Nice to see you. Uh you may recall, board members, that this was something that came up where where the uh the MBTA Advisory Board actually asked, I think, a member of the board to uh to be a member and we said, let's see if there's anybody out there that might be a commuter or has other interests that we can appoint to be our representative. And Chester has stepped forward, so Chester, welcome, and why don't you give us a little bit of background about why you're interested in uh you know, becoming a member of the MBTA Advisory Board and we'll go from there.
You bet, thank you very much. I'll I'll look for some thumbs up to know that I've got audio, I saw you nod, I think I have it. Hey, so my name's Chester Allen Osborne, with a name like that, you typically go by Ozzy, so please call me Ozzy, O Z Z Y or O Z Z I E, I'll never tell you which way. Um, I'm a twenty-year veteran of the US military, I spent most of that career in special operations. I I mentioned that because I've had the pleasure of working at all four levels of government, federal, state, and local, as well as as an ex-pat representing our government overseas. Um, I work for Mass DOT, so I need to check that there's no conflict. I am the Director of Transportation Management Systems and Operations, Tismo, which is a holistic way to think about congestion management, safety management, and reliability management. I see some people's eyes and ears perking up. Um, I'm one of those people that due to the pandemic, my wife and I rethought about where we are raising our kids. During the pandemic, our family doubled in size because we adopted two lovely little girls who are probably about to come make noise. Thank you, and you know the way kids are, you unmute yourself on a meeting, they come to the screen to be seen. Um, so they'll be here any moment, I fear, and it's a pleasure. So we we thought about the way we're raising a family, we said Maynard. This spring, we did a lot of canoeing and bike riding through the lovely town, we said it's Maynard, so I'm happy to report in November, we closed on Sixth Country Lane. Uh, I hate to throw around the term dream house, but having just thrown a hundred thousand dollars of work at it, I think it's getting close there. Um, so we're, my wife and I, she's a teacher at Drummond Farm, the Audubon Sanctuary just down the road, we're very civically minded, we're on several nonprofit boards of directors and we founded one. Um, so immediately our thought came to how to get involved with the town, where to give our extra energy to make the community as best as it can be and reflect, you know, what we want our children to inherit for a world. In being in transportation, I was scrolling through your excellent website and I see the MBTA Board. Uh, one of the things we did before we bought the house was I drove out there at four AM and drove to Boston, I drove out there at four AM and rode my bike to Boston and I drove out there at four AM and took the train to Boston, just to make sure I could still do that, two or three days a week. Um, and the happy answer was yes, so being on the MBTI Advisory Board just made sense to us. Um, how we could reflect things like regional transit, improves improving service, improving reliability and how to do those things to really support what's called that first mile of transportation, how to make it easy for Maynard residents to get to that commuter rail, to get people out of single occupancy vehicles, to better the environment, to better their mobility, to still capture that town and country feel while opening it up for diversity, equity, inclusion, to let others think about moving to the community who might be a one-car family that might be bound to that commuter rail. So really, that's it in a nutshell, um I could go on and on, I have been told by several people, I'm very verbose when I give them a moment to get a word in edgewise, so I'll pause there for question or comment.
Well, what I will say is, first off, um thank you for your enthusiasm and uh but more importantly, thank you for your service to your country, I very much appreciate that. Um, and um relative to um your volunteerism, uh I I mean, you answered the questions that I had, that I would have as to why and your, as I said, your enthusiasm speaks volumes as to uh, you know, why you you probably will do a wonderful job and welcome to our community as well. Uh, so. So I'll open it up if there's any questions or comments from the board members.
I don't have any comment. I don't have any questions. I think that my comment would be that you clearly have a passion for this type of thing, which I think is fantastic. And I think that it would serve Maynard well to address these issues because of, you know, the, the gap between not being right at MBTA Transit, but being so close to it. So I think that, I think that having your, having your passion for it will be really helpful.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Now, I just want to echo first and foremost, thank you again for your service and your dedication. We welcome you to Maynard. I think you're going to be a fabulous addition with your enthusiasm and energy. And I, and also your civic duty. I think you, you're, you're going to be a fantastic asset to our town and appreciate you stepping up and taking on this challenge.
Thank you as well.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll just quickly echo everything. No, yeah, I'll echo what Justine and Armin said. I, I really appreciate how you called out specific cases, you know, in families where maybe they don't have one car per person or for budgetary reasons need to take the MBTA, et cetera. I also love how you took what I almost always heard called the last mile problem and switched it to the first mile problem. I'm not sure I recognize that, but that was a neat inversion. So I, you know, I appreciate your, your enthusiasm. So welcome to town. Good luck. Lots of good canoeing to be had around here. So appreciate you stepping up and finding a spot where your passion matches a need for the town.
Thank you as well.
Now, I'll take a motion.
I will move to approve Chester Osborne as the designated liaison to the MBTA Advisory Board for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, authorizing the use of digital signatures have approved.
Second.
All right, and I will remember to call you Ozzy, Ozzy.
Yes.
All right. So any further discussion? If not, Chris.
Approve.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Armin.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. And I would assume we need to get him sworn in if there is a swear, swearing in, given that it's not really a town official. Is there a requirement?
I'll have to check on that. That's a good question, but probably because
Because he's our appointment.
So, yeah, that's true. And the law is sort of applied no matter what. So it's, you know, being a public official, you're still, you still have to adhere to the same conflicts of interest laws that, that, that Ozzy referred to. So it's good practice either way. Come in and see the town clerk and get, and get sworn in.
So one point of order, and I appreciate, folks, how closely you adhere to Robert's rules, having had to teach those at several levels of government overseas. I, I, I need, and maybe Mr. Johnson, we can speak. I, I need like a offer of intent, a one paragraph letter, and I just need to clear that through my legal department because I am an appointed manager. There should not be a conflict. My dealings with MBTA professionally are very minimized, but I, I would be not doing due diligence if I didn't at least pass that to review.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ozzy. I feel strange saying Ozzy, but I want, I want to say Ozzy, so I'm gonna say Ozzy. All right, it's seven twenty-eight. I don't want to cut short any of the other appointments. So I'm looking to see what, if anything. Well, does anybody have any, let's go to correspondences. Does any, does anybody have any of those? There's a lot of them. So maybe there isn't. I'm picking a wrong one. Is there any correspondence that people want to speak about, or can we just approve the correspondence? Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're here. We're just looking over to see whether there's anything important that we should bring up.
I'll make a motion if you want.
Yeah, please.
All right, move to accept and approve correspondences A through M as shown.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Armin.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right. I will then do what I did on the last one and begin to read our public hearing notice for the seven thirty hearing. Seven thirty public hearing, which I think all of us are pretty excited about. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight, as amended, that a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven thirty P M. via Zoom. Enclosed application for a transfer retail restaurant license on premise for malt and wine beverages as a common victualer license for Maynard Fine Arts Theater LLC, doing business as Maynard Fine Arts Theater at twenty-one Summer Street, Maynard, Mass. Manager is Lester Gordon, and a copy of the application is on file in the office of the Select Board. And it is seven thirty. I believe I saw Les online earlier. Hello? Well, you have to unmute yourself. There you go. Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
So obviously, we're all very excited about what's happening and, you know, the, the, you know, the reemergence of the theater and, you know, the future of our downtown as well. So why don't you tell us a little bit about what your plans are, when people like, you know, if you know the answers to some of these questions. I know people will ask, when are you opening? That'll be one of the questions that are asked, but whatever you can tell us, please.
Well, thank you very much for including us in this hearing. My name is Daphne Kraut Gordon. The two of us happen to be related for many, many years. And we are very excited about almost being the owners, almost meaning by next week, all of the deal and the paperwork and the many, many different components should be in place, but give or take, it will be our theater sometime before the end of January. Our plan is to open up the theater. Unfortunately, if COVID were not an issue, we would be able to give you a very definite date. But at this point, we are really looking at what the trends are, what the health situation is, what, basically, it all depends on health. We've done a lot of the planning in advance. We've been for the past four or five months really putting a plan together, making all the connections that we need to connect with in order to be able to have a viable, vibrant, exciting movie theater again, using all three screens. Our plan as far as the movie component is to continue, to some extent, the way that it was, but really to expand upon it and to have one of the theaters show the more, you know, typical, traditional first-run movies, the other really perhaps catering more to families. And then one that we make sure there are festivals, there are community components that are really brought into the theater. So our excitement about this is that Maynard has been so receptive about it. One of the reasons that we're motivated to do it is a very selfish one. We have loved the movies from the day that the two of us met. And the other thing that we also love is ice cream. So to have this under one roof, the only thing that's missing is a tennis court. If you can put in a tennis court, I will really be ecstatic. But that's really the motivation that allows us to do this. We've both had careers. I'm still actively working in my career. And this is a very nice component also to what it is that I do, which is I work with people with intellectual and physical disabilities. And part of the, part of the additional benefits for the movie theater, as well as for the creamery, is to use part of it as vocational training for individuals with intellectual disabilities. I've been in Maynard. We have two group homes where we've been in Maynard for forty, just about forty years. So I know the community very well. And this really allows for people from Maynard, as well as nearby areas, to be able to offer things to perhaps their students while they're still in school and then transitioning into adulthood as having all the components from the concession stand to perhaps filmmaking that people can learn. So that's part of it. But primarily, it's going to be a movie theater that has these extra components. The, the request before you is to continue the beer and wine license. We have some interesting ideas about how we'd like to expand the type of beer and wine and perhaps really make it more an inclusive part of the experience of people who come there and not just get a bottle of, a glass of wine, but just have a, an overall ambiance to the place with beer and wine as an additional benefit. As far as the creamery goes, we're also looking to see other things that can be offered there. We've done a pretty exhaustive search of what's around right in Maynard Center, as well as the local areas. And we're thinking about bringing in some specialty items that perhaps people from the local area have always wanted to have a venue to sell it. So it could be specialty breads, signature cookies, and really have it expand beyond just the, just the ice cream. So that's our plan for the ice cream, for the creamery and for the movie. We've looked at long-range possibilities of perhaps even combining the two and making lobby bigger. So we have many plans, but obviously, we're taking one step at a time. Originally, the plan was to open the opening of the movie theater, frankly, with a week before the Oscars are open, thinking that we could make our own Maynard red carpet event. Unfortunately, we don't want to open before we can really get everybody excited about it. If they're going to wind up feeling skittish about entering a public space, we'd rather postpone it right than, you know, start it off softly and then people back off. The creamery, however, we will probably start before the movie theater, given how things are. So sometime around spring, we will, as it gets closer, we'll have a date. As we figure out what's going on with the pandemic, we'll have a date. And our interest is really in being very inclusive with all of the people in Maynard and making this, you know, bringing it back to, to what it was and much more so.
Wonderful. Go ahead.
We're on the same page exactly, which is not something we normally would think about each other's. Entirely in agreement. From my very selfish point of view, I can retire since two thousand thirteen or fourteen. Wanted to, but because things changed and I really didn't have a choice but to retire. My background is in institutional development and direct mail marketing and public relations. So I'm excited because it's going to give me a chance to get back into the field that I really enjoyed working in and in the movie business as well. In my, my disabilities in running a large organization and in providing services to people. We can work together. Maintain that relationship. Armin, never done something like that before. We think it should be a win-win situation for, for everybody. For what it's worth, even though my name is Les Gordon, if you really enjoy calling people Ozzy so much, feel free to call me Ozzy.
Because he hates the name Lester.
That's good. I like that.
All right, well, thank you. So any members, any questions from the members of the board?
Well, I personally look forward to that red carpet, the grand opening. So hopefully, we'll be soon, we'll be seeing it very soon. And it'll be something that I'll, I think the entire town will be welcoming. And you may end up having a big line there trying to
We're hoping.
Tuxedos and all?
Yeah, tuxedos. I think it would be nice. That would be nice.
Seriously, that's exactly what we're planning to do, really make it just very exciting, very special, and announce that this is not your grandmother's movie theater. This is really a new and improved and something that I think will bring a lot of business in many different capacities to other businesses.
We've spent, we've spent some time last several months visiting other independent nonprofit theaters. Coolidge Corner, the Amherst, there's one down in Connecticut called the Perspectory Theater, which is actually run entirely by people with disabilities. We basically, you know, are taking the best of what we've seen and hoping to play.
Right. Any other members of the board with questions or comments?
No, I'll just make a comment. I was absolutely thrilled to hear that it had been purchased, and I'm even more thrilled just to hear your enthusiasm for the project and all the plans that you have going on. It, that theater just means so much to so many people in this town. It's part of the cultural lifeblood of this town. And to, to see it be restored and have the creamery back open again is fantastic. So I'm, I'm looking forward to, to visiting. Once you guys are open, get a nice thing of ice cream. I'll do it in the middle of February if, 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 if that's when it happens to be, even though it's not the ice cream time, but best of luck and thank you.
That's great to hear, but you should know that any time is ice cream time.
Yeah.
Very good point.
Any other questions from the board members or comments? It's a public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? I'm looking. I don't see any.
Thing Natasha's got her handle.
Hold on, let me go back. Okay, Natasha.
I just want to just say how enthusiastic I'm excited about what you're talking about, the inclusive aspect of it. And I, I know that many theaters are, have screenings that are sensitive for, for children or families who have autism and disabilities where they're sensory considerate. And I know that Maynard has a very robust CPAC, Special Education Parent Group, who would love to hear more about as your plans evolve to help promote some of those opportunities that might be available in our town to take advantage of in the future. So I just wanted to welcome you to express how excited I am to hear about what you're proposing and to just extend an opportunity to promote that within communities that I know many parents would be beneficial from. So thank you.
Thank you.
And please feel free to put any parent or the CPAC, CPAC in touch with me. They can contact me or contact tillinc.org, which is the organization I founded forty-one years ago. And, you know, we're in Maynard, but we're in many different places. And, and I am thinking of doing like a movie time that is perhaps during school vacation or early in the morning when your kid is up at six A M. and you don't know where to go. So perhaps opening it up for that kind of thing for moms and kids, for dads and kids, for grandparents and kids. So there are many ideas and I, I welcome the, the exchange.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I will move to approve the application for on-premise restaurant malt and wine alcohol beverage for Maynard Fine Arts Theater LLC, doing business as Maynard Fine Arts Theater at twenty-one Summer Street, Maynard. Manager is Les Gordon, authorizing the use of digital signature if approved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. And, and it's less Ozzy Gordon now. We learned that.
Yeah, yeah, Chester, you're gonna have competition there, Chester.
Everybody's gonna go by Ozzy before, before the night's over.
Is Ozzy still there?
Yeah, he's still there. Still online.
So tell me what you think about Chester. Is that any better than Lester?
Can I just ask a logistical question? Is there a different hearing for the victualer's license or is this all encompassing?
This is, this is all encompassing.
Yeah.
Okay. So there isn't something separate we have to do?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so.
Thank you very much.
Here, while we have to vote. Let, let us do that first. Chris.
Move.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Armin.
Enthusiastically, yes.
And I am a yes as well. Congratulations. Good luck. Look forward to seeing you down there.
Be in touch.
Okay, and so for the board, we need a motion, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing at seven forty-three P M.
Second.
Roll call, Chris.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Armin.
Yes.
I am a yes as well. All right, we move backwards for those following at home to item number five B, which is the Cultural Council. Donald Chester James, I mean, Donald Ozzy James will be our, our, our Cultural Council candidate. Welcome, Mr. James. Nice to see you. I see you've got these guitars in the background. Looks like you've got a little musical studio going there for yourself, but welcome. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Cultural Council. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the cultural council.
Sure. Yeah, I'm disappointed to say that I don't go by Aussie. I go by DJ. And I, my family and I, we moved to Maynard six years ago. And almost immediately I wanted to get involved in the, the town in some fashion. So I've been a member of the Sesquicentennial Committee over the past few years. And at once that was sort of wrapping up, I was looking for something else to stay involved in the civic life of Maynard and being a music educator my entire professional career for the past nearly 25 years. The Cultural Council having an opening seemed the perfect spot for me. I am, like I said, a music educator. I teach in the music departments at Boston College and College of the Holy Cross. Spent my entire career both teaching, but also as a creative performer as well. Exactly as, as you said, there are instruments back here. I play in a couple of bands with different people around town and, and some other ensembles. And I've worked on a number of cultural projects through the years as well. So all of that kind of coming together. My, my background, my interests, my passion aligned well with my, my dedication to, to civic responsibility and duty. And it seemed to line up fairly well in this opening. So I started attending cultural council meetings a few months ago and happy to again submit my candidacy for the opening.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
I couldn't have asked for a better experience and background to volunteer for the cultural council.
No, I, I always feel that, you know, I don't have questions when the application is filled out like this because I get a better understanding of the person and their background and with your resume. So thank you for serving. It is a fun group. And I, I wish you good luck and I appreciate you stepping up to help both for this and on the Sesquicentennial Committee.
Thanks.
All right. Seeing no other questions or comments. Is there a motion?
I'll move to appoint Donald James to the Cultural Council for the term to expire. Oops, I think I just lost my place to expire June 30th, 2024. Authorizing use of digital signature approved.
Second.
Any further comments? Chris?
No comments.
No, it's yes or no.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. I've got to figure out a way. So I confuse people all the time with that. So I got to figure out a way to make it so that I don't confuse people. So item number C under.
Thank you again. Thank you, Donald.
Yep, thank you. Good luck. You have to get sworn in at Town Hall and see Becky and get your little stamped document and sworn in.
Absolutely. Thanks.
All right, great. As we were briefly touching upon, as I was earlier, the discharge of the Sesquicentennial Committee, the 500, the 150th committee is, if time has come to, to say thank you and to discharge the committee effective immediately. So while I'm open for a motion, I'm also open for any comments or questions or other things from the board members.
Well, it's too bad that we cannot have this committee continue, but I'm only kidding. You know, Lindsay and the entire team, they were just fantastic in pulling this off together, pulling this off. So we thank you very much again. And I'm sure that some of you will be jumping on other projects that the town has to offer. So we welcome you aboard.
I have to say, I agree. I think that you overcame amazing odds to pull together. Just fantastic, thoughtful, meaningful celebrations that was, I think, more than any of us could have asked for during this time. And, and we're very, I'm very proud of you all as a committee and I'm proud of the town. So thank you very much.
Any other comments? Chris, any comments? Jeff?
Just, 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 just more thanks for the, the committee and all the hard work they did. And all the great events the town was able to enjoy.
Yeah.
Some nice T-shirts.
Yeah, I have some.
And go ahead, Jeff. You, you had some?
Everything that I've said before, when, when we've seen this committee over the number of times over the last couple of months, but just thank you. All the hard work you put in, you guys worked together as a, you know, as a real team effort. And it was great to see all of that come through and to really put a human element into it, as, as Justine alluded to just a second ago. So thank you very much for this and we are very appreciative.
And I think that the, the highlight, well, there are so many highlights throughout the year of that took, taken so much time to plan even before the year began. But at, to have at the end, which we heard, I don't know, it was last meeting or the meeting before, that not only is the committee coming to an end, but they're returning money to the town and substantive money to the town. And, you know, I remember when we, this was probably five years ago when it was, I think it was Jack McKeen came in and said we weren't, we wanted to start this Sesquicentennial Committee and asked for us to, to cede some money. And, you know, to know now that we have actually not only paid out what we paid out, but have reaped rewards for it is very, very, you know, pleasing. So congratulations to every single person. There were a number, probably a number of iterations along the way where people joined in because they have time commitments elsewhere. They had to drop off and somebody else came in and joined in. There were so many people that participated in this project along the last several years. And, you know, congratulations and thank you. And please come back to the next, not the next 150th. I don't think any of us will be here, but for the next big project that we have to do to, you know, just to continue the volunteerism that we have. It's sort of a theme. So thank you. So is there a motion?
I will move to discharge sadly the Sesquicentennial Steering Committee effectively, effective immediately.
Second.
Any further comment? Hearing none, we will vote.
Can I just quick?
David, sorry.
Yeah, please.
It's Lindsay McConkey. I'm the co-chair of the committee. I just want to thank all of you for acknowledging us publicly on this and several other meetings. You guys have been very generous with your praise. So thank you. And I just, on a personal note, want to thank all the committee members that I see on this call. It has been such a pleasure to work with this group of people and the amount of time and effort and energy this group of volunteers put in is it's staggering when you think about it over the years. And then in the context of a pandemic, it really makes it even more impressive. And I am just so honored to have gotten to do this work with this group and really happy to be able to call this group of people friends now. So thank you all. Thank you all to everyone I see who's on the 50th committee for all the work you did and for giving, giving us all the chance to get to know each other and become friends. It was really a wonderful experience. So thank you.
And any other members who want to comment, please.
If I can just quickly say something, Paula Copley.
Yep.
So thank you for all your support, Board of Selectmen and Town and Greg. It was a pleasure to be asked to be part of this a little longer than I thought, than we all thought, but we did get through it. We, I would personally be a miss if I did not mention the amount of work that Lindsay has put into this whole project. This is her background and she came on in all professional role. The first time we saw her at the basement of the Town Hall, wondering who she was. We had no idea how fortunate the entire town and our committee was. We were really the, the, the lucky people to have her, whatever she would suggest. We knew was going to be the best plan. When people comment on the parade being the highlight, I will have you know that that was, you know, that was Lindsay. She, we may have done some of the labor with her, but she organized, she made the charts. She made the route. She got the contacts. So every round of applause, in my opinion, goes to Lindsay. Yay, Lindsay. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. It, that, that is very kind. It was a really, really good team effort. It was a good committee. It was a good team of people who really contributed everything they had. So thank you all. And you guys get to keep Jen Piccarelli. She went ahead and did another parade a couple of months later. Look at that. So much time. She did another one.
Yeah, you rubbed off on, you rubbed off.
Hey, any other members of that committee wish to speak before you're discharged ceremoniously rather than on ceremony? All right. Seeing none, I think it's, it is time to vote if we haven't already to discharge. Chris. I see you say yes, but I didn't hear you. Yes. Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Armand.
Sadly, yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thank you all again.
Mr. Chair, before you move on.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if, if the board had gotten a chance to look in the documents for this and, but David Marks, who's on that committee, who's the author of the, of the book associated with it, with that group and what they want to do. David just asked if there was any preference of the board as to what to do with the surplus of those books. He can continue to sell them or else he offered to give them away. So I, just based on his email, it looks to be about maybe 250 might be remaining. And a couple of his ideas he threw out include give them to all the employees in Maynard, give them to the graduating seniors at the high school. So I don't know if the board has any preference. You don't have to answer tonight. You can think about it and get back to me. I just, that's what he asked me.
Okay.
Either of those options sounds like a good use of those books to me.
Rather than selling them.
Fine. And that would be perfectly acceptable to me as well.
Okay. All right. Great.
All of the above is okay by me. So.
So he's, he's got 250 books left over. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, about that. Yeah.
What about the library?
I don't think they can use 250.
50, but some, yeah.
Yeah, no, they do have copies. That's.
Oh, they do? Okay.
Yeah.
Sure they do. The school libraries.
Yeah, school library. Yeah.
I'll double check that. I'll double check. Yeah, that's, that, so maybe we'll have to get rid of.
So now we're down to 246.
Yeah, yeah.
I already have one, so I don't need one.
But if no one feels really strongly, then we'll just keep, we'll either, we'll just keep selling them until he's told otherwise. And then, yeah, that's fine.
We may consider, you know, even offering them to neighboring towns for their libraries so that they have them, you know, just advertisement for us. Then for Dave.
That's great. Sure.
All right. Item number nine, as we move along, I think we've gotten through the others out of order somewhat, but item number nine is the new alcoholic beverage on premise consumption as common Victular license for Bullspit Brewing at the Mill. Megan, I guess I'll turn it over to you, but is there, is there a member, is there a representative from Bullspit here?
Is Jim Hunt on usually? I don't see him. You might recall Jim's been on a couple of times. He's joined us a couple of times. This is procedural. So they're, they, they're, they're moving along. Becky, do you have anything else to add?
No, I had added all the comments from all the different departments today. We still have to hear from our building commissioner and the fire chief for their two pieces. But Jim Hunt is very aware that the license and his book to proceed will not leave my office until we have signatures. So he's aware of that. Plus he will owe us a check for all the licenses. So he knows, he knows to come to the select board office.
And any motion that we make can actually include the fact that we need to have the sign offs from the ones that are pending as well as the check.
Yeah.
So.
It, it's in the motion. Yep.
Yeah. So I'll welcome a motion.
Move, move to approve the retail restaurant license pending all inspections, occupancy and fees on premise of all alcoholic beverages licensed along with a common Victular Entertainment and Automatic Amusement License at BSBC Realty Trust, doing business as the taproom at Bullspit Brewing Company at 5 Mill in Main, Suite 110. Manager is James M. Hunt and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from the board?
No.
Seeing none. All in favor. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right. Item number 10. There are two topics from the Public Works Department this evening. The first is well foray and treatment plant engineering change order. Justin, I thought I saw you on, but are you on page two?
Yeah, there he is.
Hi, David.
Hi, where are you? Oh, there you are. Hi, welcome. How are you?
Sorry, I'm balancing CPC on one computer and select board on another. I feel, I feel a pain, Megan. So David, yes, in front of the board is a change order for design and treatment aspects of our well for a new water source and our treatment plant for upgrades to incorporate that new well source. We have performed our 70% design phase, which is reviewed by DEP. And DEP provides recommendations, guidelines or start over points to, to say the least. They indicate areas of concern. They apply regulatory premises to treatment process concepts. So what ended up happening is with this change order being so large, it was actually accumulation of several change orders that I asked Dan Tech to just put in one so that we don't have to go to this process multiple times. We're looking at four, four major scenarios that pushed us into a large change order. One was the 70% design and the regulatory aspect of our backwater discharge into our online lagoons that is no longer allowable under regulatory law through DEP. We need to remove our waste. And when I say waste, it's the waste that is filtered out through our treatment processes, typically iron and manganese. So we had to then redesign a backwash system that could go to the sewers, either the sewer station up on Tiger Drive, which is a pretty far run. But we can pump backwash waste to the, to the collection system, to a collection system. And our alternative option, which has actually become our primary option based off of water capacity. DEP is also mandating that we maximize efficiency with our water capacity is that we actually pump to a tank system, which we recirculate and recycle our backwash water, which then goes through a filtration process for a second time. And then we pump out through trucking the waste solids out of the backwash tank. That treatment change was probably 50 to 75% of this change order cost. We did run into some local regulatory issues in regards to expansive survey and environmental work. We also are incorporating modifications and conceptual plans for future PFAS and organic removal, as indicated in the ARPA fund earmarks. When, when I went across the board, probably a couple of months ago in regards to the $2 million earmark allocation for localized ARPA funds for water and sewer projects. So all of that combined is translated into this change order that you see in front of you. We're pretty confident that this change order for the design should be the last, but there is anticipation that we may have some design field change orders as the bid process happens and construction starts to take place due to the market. The material market is changing drastically and so is in construction, marketing and, and pricing. So based off of that, this change order is in front of you now to try to finalize the design so we can go to bid.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I have one quick question. Were any of these changes driven by, lack of a better word, unfunded mandates that the state came up with after we began the process? Or was it more or less just things that evolved?
So we believe that the regulatory aspect of the online lagoons was wrong. And we disputed it. But we disputed a regulation that was currently wrong, but is adopted by the time we construct. So at that point we'd be reacting and that's inefficient. So DEP really wanted to get in front of this, as do we. Once we had the conversation and realized that due to the NIP these changes in the sensitivity of this area for iron and manganese and. due to the NIP these changes in the sensitivity of this area for iron and manganese and the potential pollution, which is not pollution because the online lagoons was really to prevent pollution. But there is the potential for iron and manganese to seep back into the environment and that's what the concern is. So then we're talking about a system that was never in place. Well, treatment plant four does not currently have a sewer main that pumps up to Tiger Drive. So that cost alone, it, it is going to be pretty drastic and the design is going to be pretty drastic as well. We tried to maximize once, once the board earmarked $2 million of ARPA funds. It did also allow the DPW to explore options that we always wanted to look at, which was water capacity and sustainability with our backwash. Currently, our backwash at treatment plant four can waste anywhere between 100 to 300 gallons of water every 24 hours. So we would prefer that go back into our distribution system, but it's a pretty, a pretty costly endeavor. But with the earmark of $2 million in the borrowing capacity that we already accounted for, we're actually pretty confident that we can move forward with that. And then the priority for that, for the DPW was based off the fact that Maynard Crossing is filling up faster than we're moving on our processes for water capacity. And there's potential infill projects in front of us. And sadly, if we don't get in front of our capacity issue, we're going to continually chase our tails and Old Marlborough Road, as discussed prior, is five years away. And that's a very hard line I'm drawing, so.
But Justin, can I just ask a quick question? And I apologize that I didn't catch this earlier and I, I was looking at numbers when you were talking. So if you've already answered this, I am very sorry. On the front page of the professional services agreement change order, it says the total fees of this particular change order, which is the 236,715, and then the original amount. And then it says the change order number is one with a different number, and then the total agreement is 596. Is the change order for, and I read this wrong when I read it a couple nights ago, so I apologize, but is the change order? How, so how did we get to the 596, I guess? Because is, is this the first change order that we've done?
This will be the first change order. That's correct. So this change order is for 236,715.
Okay.
Excuse me, I don't like the way that Stan Tech puts this together. So right now, as what we're looking at in front of us is the original contract, the 91,000 and a change order of 236,715. I actually believe this, there's a clerical error in the change order number and the total agreement that I'll clear up, but I actually go off of the proposal underneath the amendment proposal, which clearly defines, it's almost, it's partly more of a contract, which clearly defines the cost and the project fee, the services, if you go all the way to the bottom, the services described in this proposal will be completed for a cost of 236,715. The table below provides a breakdown of estimated fee by text.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure because I was trying to find the 596 number.
Yeah, before, before, if the board approves it before David signs off on it, I'll make sure that's clarified.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Any other questions? And hearing none, if there's a motion, I will take one.
We'll move to approve the amendment two as a change order relative to the well for a wellfield development and improvements to well for water treatment plant final design with Sand Tech Consulting Services in the amount of 236,715.
You're muted, Jeff, but I, I saw the second come out of your mouth. So any further discussion? Justin, will it require a wet signature?
I don't believe so because this is an amendment. This is just a change order. The original contract is set in stone. This is really just a change order.
All right, that's fine. All right, so any other comments? Hearing none. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right. Item 10B is the powder mill sewer pump station and force main preliminary design proposal. Justin, it's back to you.
Yeah, again, so this one is a little more cookie cutter. I know the board is pretty familiar with standardized contracts from the state of Massachusetts. As I feel like we just keep dropping those bombs on top of you guys with all the recent grant awards. This one is in regards to our recently awarded housing choice grant for $200,000 for preliminary design and study of a powder mill road sewer lift station upgrade and forced main redundancy system that goes under the Aspet River. This system actually is currently in place and it is undersized and it is past its effective lifespan. And we are looking to move to secure future funding. Typically, the first, a funding source for a project like this, we'd be looking at master experience or potential bonds on our water and sewer utility enterprise. Typically, for this project, that would fall under sewer enterprise funds. The preliminary designs allow us to start the permitting project as this environmental impact could take several years to get through permitting as we're talking about potentially drilling a redundant sewer force main under the river. Clearly, you can understand the sewer under the river, if it were to fail, would cause a pretty bad environmental impact. So this process is really complex sometimes. But we were lucky enough to get this award and start the preliminary design, which should hopefully lead the internal town of Maynard grant team to continue to provide funding sources to move this project forward through other grant and alternative means. But in front of you today is just the grant and is the basic contract for the state so that we can proceed with, with the preliminary design.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? We will take a motion.
Move to accept the terms of the agreement with Startek Consulting Services, Inc. John, can you hear me? For development of powder mill server station and forced main preliminary improvement designs. Authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you, Justin. Get back to that other meeting.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Justin.
All right, item number 11 is the the final approval of the activity and use limitation with the land behind 13 Brown Street. And as the board will remember, several weeks ago, there was discussion about the property, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, Greg, but I believe this is it. The property that had previously been cleaned up following some discovery of some pollution from long ago when we were doing the, as a result of digging the rail trail, they found some, some long ago issues. And so to protect that land from ever being sort of disrupted again, we put in a moratorium on the use of the land going forward. And so now we just need to finalize the approval on that.
Yeah, that's right. And then went to town meeting and they approved. So now this, like, this is like the, well, this should be the final step.
Any questions from the board on this? Without any, if somebody wants to make a motion?
Pursuant to a vote of Article nine of the special town meeting on October 16th, 2021, the select board approves the activity and use limitation for the land located off of Acton Street and shown on a plan titled Activity and Use Limitation Plan of Land in Maynard, Massachusetts dated February 4th, 2019 by Stamsky and McNary, Inc., 100 Main Street, Acton, and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Yes, Becky?
I, do I actually need a real signature?
Yeah, I was going to say that after the vote, that yes, that we, we, we now believe we will need a wet signature for this.
From all of us or just from me or?
It needs to be recorded at the registry, indeed. So it needs to be notarized and signed by everyone and then never will bother you about it again. So think of it.
So everyone make plans to get in there, you know, within the next week.
I'll leave it on my counter.
Yeah. Whenever we can, within the next week or so. So any further questions? We'll vote. Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you. Item number 12 is the affordable housing rent schedule. Basically adjusting the affordable price or cost for rent based on the reconfiguration of average income, I would imagine throughout the area for the view or whatever it's called now. Halsted, Halsted, Maynard. It's just, we do this, I think, fairly regularly whereas things change. Is it, is it as a result though of the change of ownership or is it as the result of change of demographics, Greg?
It's an annual, an annual change. They take a look at the all sorts of different information and, and every year change the maximum allowable rent. It doesn't mean that they have to charge that level, but the, in the regional housing services office reviewed all of the calculations and found it to be acceptable.
Okay. Any questions from the board? And if there aren't any, we will vote or we will make a motion.
I guess I'll make the motion. We'll move to approve the 2021 proposed rent schedule for the Halsted, Maynard, AKA Maynard View development as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Item number 13, the intermunicipal agreement extension of the regional transportation program. Greg, do you want to talk quickly about that?
Yep. So the, the town of Maynard has been involved in this regional effort to try to do on demand services to, to sort of, similar to that, like last mile to a degree, but mostly focused on those, that population that is not necessarily going downtown. They're just trying to get to doctor's appointments or wherever, what have you. So it's, it's a large focus on the senior population. So Amy Lovelace, the director of council on aging, has been attending these Making Connections regional meetings. They've made a lot of progress, but they needed extension. So the Division of Local Services is allowing it, but it does require the sign off on the participating towns. And I believe the extension is till the end of the fiscal year. So if they can make more progress on this program with the funds that they have remaining, they will. But it's still going, it's an ongoing effort.
Any questions? Then we'll take a motion.
Move to approve the extension to intermunicipal agreement IMA for the Making the Connections MTC program until June 30th, 2022, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments or concerns? Hearing none. We'll vote. Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Okay. Item number 14 is the scheduled joint meeting with the Board of Health. I imagine the Board of Health members are with us. I see Jody, I see Kathy and I see Lisa is on. Lisa, are you there? And the Board of Health should probably call your meeting to order.
Okay.
I'm here, yep.
And John Robertson, our health director, if those who haven't been able to say hello, he's online also. So welcome, John.
Hi, I'm Kathy McMillan, Chair of the Board of Health. I make a motion to open the Board of Health meeting in conjunction with the select board. It is 8:18 PM on 1/19/2022. The second.
A second?
Okay, a roll call in favor. Lisa?
Hi.
Okay, Jody?
Hi.
And I'm in favor. Okay.
Okay, well, welcome Kathy and members of the Board of Health. Thank you for joining us and coming in tonight to talk about all things Board of Healthy and, and COVID related. It's nice to have you guys here. I also want to, before we begin our discussion, thank you all and John for the coordination and efforts that went into the vaccine clinics that we've had that have been tremendously successful for our community. Much needed, gave people an opportunity to, you know, to get shots and, and that otherwise may not have had that opportunity and helping us along the way. I also want to thank you for the efforts that you all made relative to when, when the Commonwealth shut down our, our contact tracing issues. You guys had to sort of pick up the slack, remember committee, trying to do yeoman's work, busy, trying to get things done with a small committee of people. All at the same time, early on in the pandemic, you guys operated without a full-time health director. We're so lucky that John has joined us, you know, lately, so that you've been able to gain from his contributions. But all of this, I really appreciate the work that you guys have put in and the efforts. And, you know, I know it's a difficult time and it's a difficult, you know, environment for all of us. So welcome and let's have a nice conversation amongst ourselves about, you know, what is happening, what the plan is. And you can tell us a little bit about the, the vote you took last week as well.
Okay.
And then, then we'll have an opportunity for all of us to talk.
Thank you, David. We are very appreciative of having John on board. He's, he's been a lifesaver for us. As you mentioned, all of 2020, it was just Lisa and I as well with the part-time health agents. So, and we're happy to have Jody on board as well. As was stated in the memo sent to the Board of Select, Select Board on December 30th, we've with John's help, the town administration, main of public schools, the school nurses, Mass Department of Public Health, Board of Health, we've had two successful vaccine clinics. One provided 97 doses and the second one was 150 plus. As you mentioned, David, the contact tracing ended, the state collaborative on 1231. The Board of Health Assistant Town Administrator and the Public Health Nurse has been working to address the loss of the support. And the medical reserve core volunteers have been working on training to help support tracing. Metro West Shared Public Health Services Collaborative is also assisting with the contact tracing. The amount of time spent on each case is being limited as cases continue to grow. A plan is being discussed to gradually move to surge protocols in this area based on guidance from the Department of Public Health. They're limiting the number of attempts made to contact positive individuals, limiting the timeframe to attempt to reach positive cases and prioritizing which cases to contact, eliminating follow-up with positive cases and informing positive cases to inform their own contacts. As you stated, we voted last week, January 12th, to put an order in for a mask order effective January 13th. We did have an advisory in place, put in on August 18th and again on December 11th, I think it was. Whatever, in December, the advisory in conjunction with the state and the State Department of Public Health. The advisory is now in line with a shift towards an approach from all governments of personal responsibility in, in the fight against COVID-19. The promotion of personal responsibility is evident in work to provide the home self test kits and encouragement for individuals not yet vaccinated to get vaccinated. Public officials suggesting getting vaccinated is your duty to, is for the evidence of the shift. The evidence of the personal responsibility approach is also demonstrated in the contact tracing guidance. And then, what else have we done? External communications are ongoing to provide the latest COVID-19 related information on the town website and other media. The COVID-19 project page is up to date for information. The COVID-19 Project page is up to date for information. Health Agent has been very busy, not just with COVID, but with numerous other things that that Board of Health deals with, including housing issues. The Board of Health has decided we will meet two times a month for the foreseeable future until things calm down, especially with the COVID-19. We have continued to work with the Metro West Shared Public Health Services Collaborative to identify best practices and access resources. Memorandums of understanding and letters of commitments have been signed and submitted. Potential related resources will include contact tracers, access to additional public health nurse, PPE epidemiologists. The Public Health Division continues to reach out and establish relationships with regional and state partners to identify best practices and access resources. And the Health Agent continues to attend multiple regional and state virtual meetings weekly to stay informed of the latest information related to COVID-19 mitigation and is in daily contact with the Assistant Town Administrator regarding those issues. Any questions as of yet?
I have an observation, Kathy. Given the, obviously, the extraordinary amount of work that you guys have had to do and for much of last year, as you mentioned, with just two members, given that one member that you had previously unfortunately rarely attended the meetings. I'm wondering if you would be supportive as of committee of a change in the charter in extending the size of Board of Health to make it, you know, you know, more than just three people that are working on these critical issues. As you just outlined, there's so much more than just COVID-19 being dealt with by the Board of Health on a regular basis. And COVID-19 is a world crisis that three people have been expected to, you know, control for our community up until we got John on to sort of take over as the professional role to lead you on a full-time basis. So what would be your thoughts relative to potential expansion if the board were to support such a, an article?
I am in full support of that, David. Kelly Polachonik and I had discussed this before COVID hit. We were, we were going to bring it forth to the Select Board before that. And then it just broke loose and we've been busy since. But I am in full support of expanding the Board of Health members. It would, it would be a great help. If any one of us has a vacation or the first of January, I was in the hospital. So, you know, that took me out of commission for a week. So it would be, it would be helpful to have another, at least another member on to cover that other person. So I would, I would be.
I would be best to have an odd number.
Odd number, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Voting, probably five is, is a number. Greg, something to think about to create, as we're going about, and I know later on we'll talk about warrant articles for May, but perhaps if we can start thinking about how we can change the number. It would require a charter change, I believe.
Charter Review Committee is active right now, so I will, I will bring that to them. And I think just catch it with all the other changes that are being planned.
Yeah, that would be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think one of the, one of the things we had talked about in the past as far as that, and I don't know, it was like a passing discussion is with the charter, putting, I think the proposal was almost to take most of the board numbers out of the charter for those types of things. And that way you could put into a bylaw and then the bylaw could always be changed by town meeting.
Change.
We wouldn't have to go through a charter review in order to change it.
That was an active point of discussion in our last meeting and we didn't finalize what the plan is, but that is definitely on the table right now as.
Okay.
All right. Does the Select Board have any questions? Anybody relative to the work that the Board of Health and the Health Agent have been involved in?
Hey Kathy, I got a question. This is Armand. I, because I listened in on the last meeting regarding the mask order. So you, are you planning on reviewing this at your next meeting to see whether or not you want, okay.
Yes, we are. The numbers have gone up a little bit. We're now at about all of December and first of January, about 1% of the population infection rate. And now we're just under 3%, but it's also post-holiday. So, and everybody met with family and friends, which is understandable after 700-plus days. So, but we will, we will, that is going to be on our agenda for the, I don't even know what date it will be, the 25th, like 26th?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, very, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'll start off. I do want to offer an apology to the Board of Health for some of the things I said at the January 4th meeting. And specifically, I do want to apologize for being critical about the absence on that day itself when the Board of Health was overseeing a vaccine clinic. And I did not know that you had that hospitalization, Kathy. I hope you're recovering well. So my primary concern was not that particular date, but rather the delay in responding to the Omicron variant. And I don't think I came across that way. And so I want to make sure that that's covered. So my apologies there. Next, I do want to thank the Board of Health for putting in a mask mandate. We've seen the National Guard called to partially fill the gap in overburden hospitals. We've seen case counts grow exponentially. We've seen multiple appeals from the heads of hospitals across the state, including Emerson, begging the public to do more to slow the spread of Omicron. So I do think that was an important step in addition to the vaccine clinics and some of the other work that we mentioned. And so thank you for taking that step. I do have a few questions. I would like to go chronologically. And I do want to focus on the current state and the future, but there is one unresolved question I do have from our August meeting, which was the last time we had a joint meeting with the Board of Health. And so at that meeting, the Board of Health reported that our adult and senior vaccination rate was 95%. But the data I have from the state shows that our adult and senior vaccination rate is 85% at that time in August, which is a significant difference. It is a threefold increase in the number of unvaccinated individuals. And even today, our full vaccination rate for adults and seniors is under 95%. I think it said 90 or 91. And so is there another data source that the Board of Health is pulling from? Or what happened with that statistic?
First of all, Jeff, the state does not update their, their website or their numbers as often as we do. For whatever reason, I don't know whether it's staffing. But maybe John could speak more to that in the numbers.
Hi. So I'm, you know, I'm not sure what numbers were used in August. You know, I certainly wasn't involved at that time. And I do think some of the reporting has changed throughout the year. You know, right now for vaccination rates, I would go to the state's vaccination dashboard. And so those numbers would be, they would be lagging by like a week. You know, we wouldn't have the current information, you know, up to date. So I'm trying to, as of, you know, so the most recent information we have on vaccination rates is as of 1/11 on that state dashboard. I'm not sure where the other number came from back in August.
Okay. And the reason I am concerned about that one number is during the August meeting, the Board of Health came and really gave two points of information for their introduction. One, the vaccination statistics, and two, that they didn't want a mask mandate. So when there was no mention of the Delta variant, which was important at that time, I would say more important than the implication or non-implementation of the mask mandate. It's very important that if you're going to leave it in a one-sighting number, that we get it correct. So I just want to be very careful that we're having accurate information going forward. So, as I mentioned earlier, my main concern has been how long it takes the Board of Health to incorporate new information into their thinking when the variant arrived, first Delta, now Omicron. And so at our August meeting, I think the most important new information was that the Delta variant showed for the first time that transmission between vaccinated individuals was happening. And it was clear that vaccination, while still to this day is and boosters are most important tool, that that wouldn't be sufficient to responding to the pandemic alone. And some combination of, in addition to vaccination, masking, distancing, contact tracing, testing would still be necessary to mitigate the worst effects of the virus. And at that meeting, the Board of Health cited on a reactive approach indicating that once case counts rose, they could meet to implement a mask mandate. So by the time of November meeting, cases in Massachusetts were already around twice as high as they were during that meeting in August. So the next question I have is, did the Board of Health discuss any further policy responses specific to the rising cases from Delta and Omicron at the November meeting?
We did, Jeff. We had also in August put in that advisory for the mask, to wear masks for this mass DPH. It was posted on our website. And continued and updated it in December.
And what was the difference between that advisory and the August one?
It's, it's the same advisory from the state to, I have the wording here somewhere, that it is advised that that advisory of all individuals, regardless of vaccination status, wear masks in all indoor places, public places. Masks continue to be required in certain settings for all people regardless of the vaccination status. In Maynard, face masks are required indoors in all municipal buildings.
And so that's pretty much the same as the August update. It was just reinforcing what was already there.
Right.
Okay. And so, given the dramatic upswing of cases in early December, and given the approach you outlined in August, why did the Board of Health wait until December 28th to discuss further policy responses?
I don't know that I call it a dramatic upswing, Kathy. What is, what is your?
In, in case counts?
We were only at 1% just here.
Did I define dramatic upswing, Jeff? Do you have a, like a metric for that? Like, why are you making that statement?
If you can look at state-county statistics and see an exponential rate of growth in the number of cases and hospitalizations starting in, well, I'd say mid-November, I believe it was.
Right. And our main concern is Maynard. And I know people come and go for Maynard. But we were confident enough with our vaccination rates, with the school mandate for masks, and the low exposure rate at that time. We were watching it. As far as the hospitalization rates, just as a point, I was reading in Health Magazine, the hospital review that came out in August of 2020. Mass has 1,273 ICU beds, 307 specialty beds, 12,000-plus acute care beds per cost reports. Hospitals usually run at 92% occupancy during non-COVID times. So you know, I know, I know it's being reported, they are high, and they are. The main concern is the staffing in the hospitals with the vax mandates too. You know, people, people that have had COVID don't feel they need to get vaccinated and they're losing their jobs because of it. So you know, just, just as a happened to be reading that was yesterday. So.
And I was reading an article about a leading emergency room doctor at Columbia Hospital in New York City. And he basically was discussing all of the cases he had seen coming through the emergency room. And we're talking about a major city here. All of the, he did not hospitalized anyone that was vaccinated. The hospitalizations were all the unvaccinated people, specifically for the Omicron. And he continued to emphasize that getting a vaccine is one of the best ways that you can reduce the strain on the healthcare system and the healthcare workers, who, as Kathy pointed out, currently have a lot of staffing shortages. So I think just to randomly talk about a hospitalization rate is a little misleading because, you know, we did take action. We have vaccine clinics. We continue to do outreach because we feel that people getting vaccinated is, is one of the most important things, especially with this particular variant. Because when people are vaccinated, they're getting cold-like symptoms. The majority of people that are coming down with these cases. And, you know, to say that we haven't taken any action and, you know, it's just, it's just simply just not fair and it's not true. So.
Could I point something out as well?
Yep, Jody.
About the numbers that people are seeing, they're a little bit misleading. I even questioned this myself and I spoke to the employee health nurse at my hospital yesterday. For example, my hospital has 28 people hospitalized and it says that 17 of them COVID. It doesn't indicate if they're hospitalized because of COVID or with COVID. And she said that a lot, most of them came in with, say, a broken leg. They get tested for COVID, they get marked as having COVID. A couple of them got COVID because of being in the hospital. So I just do think it's important to keep in mind that. And she said, none of the vaccinated people came in because of COVID. So I think it's important just to keep that into perspective because it can be scary to see, when you see.
It is very scary.
50% of the hospitalizations are vaccinated people, but it's not because of COVID. So it's just, and if you don't ask these questions or just look at that, look at it, it's scary to look at not knowing that. So I just wanted to point that out.
That's a very, Jody, excellent point.
Yep. Go ahead, Jeff.
No, I think it's a good point that vaccines are still the most important aspect, but the consensus from public health officials does state that it's not just vaccination. It's also masking, distancing, testing, especially in response to, to local conditions. And so I'm, I'm confused with the number of people we have coming in and out of Maynard every day, commuting to work and people from Maynard going to work in other communities. Why Maynard is the functional unit we're looking at and not something broader? I mean, especially being the main change from Delta to Omicron is not the case counts, but rather the number of people. So even though it has a less chance of severe disease, a much higher number times a smaller amount still means that we're flooding hospitals. And we do have direct quotes from the CEO of Emerson, so our most local hospital. You know, trying to underscore the urgency for the public to do more to keep this down. So why is Maynard the functional unit as opposed to something bigger such as Middlesex County, which might be more reflective of where people from Maynard are going on a daily basis to work and come back?
I.
So Jeff, I just, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in here for one second. And that's almost like asking why we as a Select Board focus on Maynard as opposed to Middlesex County? The board, the charge of this board is, is the public health of Maynard. It's not the public health of Middlesex County.
Right. And to understand the public health of Maynard, you can't just look within Maynard's borders. The virus doesn't.
Look at trends.
What's that?
You can look at trends.
You can, but you, you need the broader context. And in this particular instance for the COVID-19 spread, I think a broader population than just Maynard is important because people from Maynard go and work in other towns and people from other towns come and work in Maynard and they visit our restaurants and our shops, et cetera. So I, I just don't understand why we are only looking at Maynard's data when trying to predict or whether or not a surge is coming or that we need to put in further policy. And then now we're seeing the surge. And then one of my concerns and why I was frustrated in the fourth is we put in the mask mandate at the peak instead of getting ahead of the curve when it would have been most effective.
My question to you, Jeff, is do you think that, that anything that they, that the, the board, do you think that the board's actions change the outcome of what the numbers look like in Maynard?
I.
Can you equivocally say?
Can you unequivocally say?
I, can I what?
Can you unequivocally say that that?
Since the, since it went in so recently, I think it takes time for these, right? When you make an. A policy change, it takes time for them to come in. I think it would have been more effective if we had it in before the surge peaked. And I think the fact that the surge was coming was evident from the numbers in early and even mid December.
But I, I need to, I need to point out also that the town of Acton put their mask mandate in place and their numbers increased and their, their numbers continue to be high. So I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that. I don't necessarily know as if there is a direct correlation here between the actual mandate. And or the mask advisory that the Board of Health did have in place already. That was encouraging people to take personal responsibility for their own spaces.
No, nobody said that the peak was going to go away, right? So when you put in these policies, the question is if they hadn't, would it have been even higher? Would there even be a higher burden? And if you look at the consensus from public health officials on masking, then it makes sense. It is a pretty broad consensus. On the nation that there is effectiveness to masking. And when you see that and combine it with the CEO of Emerson Hospital pleading the public to take more action. To reduce the stress of Omicron on the hospital system. Then yes, I think it is something that we should be looking to do. Anything we can do and especially something as relatively minor as asking people to put on a mask and get boosted. Is something that we should be doing.
Yeah, but. I can make a comment on that. I don't know if some of that was taken out of context. The hospital administrators were asking people not to go to the emergency rooms because it was inundating them for testing. They wanted them to go to other. CVSs wherever they do testing because that was a big surge on the hospitals after the, during the holidays and after. For people traveling. So I don't know if that might be more of what he may have been talking about. Because they're not full with COVID patients, even Emerson is not. So I don't know, I would have to list, read that statement again. Jody, I saw you had your hand up.
Well, just to be clear, I don't think, just to respond to that last point. No, it was not just on the emergency room. There are. Statements both in January and in mid-December from. The Massachusetts Association of Hospitals and. Specifically statements signed by the CEO of Emerson. And it includes get vaccinated, get boosted and increase mask usage. So it was certainly in response to the end, specifically in response to the Omicron variant.
And, and. Thinking back to twenty twenty, there was a lot of confusion over masks. And whether to wear them, whether or not to wear them. Coming from.
And what kind Cathy also, what kind of?
Exactly. What people need to realize is. If I'm wearing a mask and I run into you, Jeff, in Market Basket and you don't have a mask on. We're both still protected whether, whether I could have it or you do have it. You're. The one mask is still protecting as long as you're not within three feet. For longer than fifteen minutes of face to face of each other. And that really hasn't been brought out a lot by the experts, along with what type of masks work. All of a sudden, the CDC is saying, oh, you need an NKN ninety five or double mask. They never said that for seven hundred days. So there's a lot of confusion about this with the public. Not that it's right or wrong. I'm just saying there's still a lot of confusion over this and, and how people perceive. The masks, so.
You know, I, I agree that especially in early twenty twenty, there, we didn't know nearly as much about masks as we do today. And today I completely agree that looking at the type of mask and trying to get people to move away from cloth and towards surgical. And surgical, especially given the shortages currently of N ninety five masks.
And they're expensive.
And yes, and ninety five would be a deal, but surgical still shows a good midway point in terms of offering. Increased protection without the cost or supply issues of N ninety five. So I, I agree with that. And I did appreciate. That you included in the mandate recommendations towards such effect. And I think that's an important part of, of, of the mandate that you put in. So I appreciate you recognizing that effectiveness.
Okay, Jody.
I just wanted to comment on. Justine had a good point. If we had. Put the mask mandate in earlier, do you think the outcome would have been any different? If it wasn't Christmas and the new year, I would say possibly. But tell me you know a single person that decided to stay home from getting together with their family this Christmas because they've missed the last. Two, is that right? I've lost time, lost. Every single holiday, every birthday, every, so I don't think it's fair to think that two weeks would have made. A big difference. I think that's where personal responsibility comes in. And people did try to take personal responsibility with testing and. But nothing's perfect. People that are doing at home tests, you know, and they might not be doing it correctly. They're not familiar. So I just don't think the outcome would have been any different if. To it had been in the middle of December, but that's just my opinion.
So December has a.
Chris December has a.
Chris.
Yeah, I have two, two points, one, one question and one point, but. The first question is for John Robinson. John, I assume that you have. Other responsibilities, real other communities in, in this, you know, COVID situation. Is it your opinion that? How the Board of Health is looking at this as just Maynard is commonplace or is that? Something you're seeing other places or is that unique to our Board of Health? I mean, I'm not, I'm not, just so you know, I'm not passing a judgment in either, in either way. I just am curious as to whether or not that's something that you see in other communities. Uh, so where it's more of a singular focus on our community than the broader community that Jeff mentioned.
Sure. So I think that, you know. Massachusetts, we have our, our home rule tradition, right? And, and that we have local boards in each community. And, and that they make decisions for their community. I don't think that's uncommon. I think you'll find each community has a different approach. That's why we can see some cities and towns have mask orders and others don't, or they have different versions of them. I, I would say that when we talk about metrics in Maynard. And we talk about our numbers because that's what we have our hands on. That's what we can work with. For example, the case counts that come out daily. I'm able to run those reports. I am not able to pull the same reports from other towns. I don't have access to those. Because each town has access to that. But that's not all that we do. You know, we attend weekly meetings with epidemiologists, with the Department of Public Health. To see what the state's guidelines and recommendations are, and we try to implement those. And we also talk with our partners in the region to see what's working for them and what's not working. We talk about. What went well at their vaccine clinics, what didn't work. What their process was for putting in mask orders. So you know, those aren't really quantifiable metrics. But they are all parts of the things that go into our decision-making and our recommendations. So you know. Maynard's metrics are what we have to work with and we only have authority over the town of Maynard, but we are looking at the state and the region. If, if that helps, does that answer your question?
Yes, yep. And my, my second question was, Jody, did you just ask if any of us know of anybody that stayed home for Christmas?
I mean, I don't, maybe, maybe someone else does.
Like people that didn't go to their mother or father's house for Christmas or a friend's house because of COVID? You were suggesting that there were none?
No, I'm sure there were. I just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to be.
I mean, I could sit here, I could sit here and draw a list of over a hundred people I know in families who didn't go out of their house. This Christmas, never mind last Christmas, this Christmas. This Christmas, as in twenty eight days ago.
Wow, I stand corrected.
It just blows my mind that you're gonna suggest as the Board of Health that you think that people didn't go out this Christmas. I'm sorry, I, 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 I mean, you know, sit here quietly and listen to the conversation, but. When someone suggests it's on our Board of Health that people didn't stay home this Christmas or New Year's Eve or Thanksgiving or any of those things. That's insane. Sorry, but that's just what I think.
I stand, I stand corrected.
I'll start the list right now. I mean.
I, I said I stand corrected. I personally don't know anyone that canceled their plans. Everyone I know. Tested prior to plans. Plans were canceled because someone had COVID, but not. In caution of it, really. I guess I would be better thing to say.
So.
Looks very.
Go ahead, Jeff.
In, in regards to the Christmas, I think if you know that you're gonna have a holiday like that and there are going to be more gatherings, I think it makes it all the more important, not less important to look at other ways that we can reduce the spread. So I, I'm not sure the fact that you have a holiday where people together. To me rises the, the. Stresses the importance of figuring out other ways to help slow the spread because you know you're already gonna take a hit, right? If, if you know, you're already, yeah, so I, I, I'm not sure that that is defense of not putting one in earlier. The other.
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not defending not putting one in earlier. The question was, would the outcome have been different? And so I'm saying we don't really know.
Yes, you can never prove the counterfactual, but. Clearly, the Board of Health feels that a mask mandate is an effective tool, otherwise it wouldn't have put one in. And all I'm saying is, we know that it takes time. Before these things take effect. So the earlier we can get them in, when we know a significant variant or. Increase of cases or hospitalizations is coming, the better. The other point I want to show is for effectiveness is, is, you know, I, you have, once you put that mandate in place. You walk through Market Basket and you see a significant increase, you know, universal masking as opposed to before. While leaving Market Basket right after the mandate went in, they put those big signs up there, masking people to mask. I saw somebody come in without a mask. Put his hand over his mouth when he realized he didn't have one on and turned right back around and presumably head back to his car. So it, it certainly makes a difference, but it's not just that. I think when people see that in the public, they see those signs go up, they see that mandate. It's a signal to them that the Board of Health is taking this seriously and that they're something different from just the, the before of. The, let's say the Delta variant, which wasn't severe, as severe as we possibly feared. So I think that those things add up. In ways that do make these effective at not stopping the peak, but just like in early twenty twenty flattening the curve. Just to avoid putting all that stress on our hospitals at the same time.
Yeah, also the Delta variant was noted in. May of twenty twenty one in the United, the first cases. So we had it. All summer where people were outside too. So where you're not indoors, where just like the flu. You know, more, you're more susceptible to catch something when you're indoors versus outdoors. So.
Yeah, I'd also, Kathy, like to point out that, you know, I, I think we're also like neglecting to fact, you know. The last thing I wanted to do is give anyone, again, a false sense of security that just because someone has a mask of any type on near them. That they're protected. I mean, just to, just to get into the science a little bit, and I don't know, some people don't want to hear this, the Omicron. Are extremely small particulates, point one micron, Jeff, you should know this, understand this, extremely small in size, you know. A lot of the masks that people wear to comply with orders.
Don't stop it.
Do not stop it. So I'm sorry, if I'm in a store and I have, I mean, I wear a mask, I'm not an anti-masker despite what, I don't want anyone to get that impression. I, I take care of elderly parents. But if I am near somebody that's masked, that's coughing. I am getting away from them, okay, because I know that I'm not truly protected. I mean, yes, the surgical masks and the disposable, I mean, I hate to even call them surgical, because actually a lot of them are just disposed, loose fitting disposable masks that people wear. I mean, yes, they offer some protection, but when we are talking about these little particulates, this is why the transmissivity is so high. I mean. I just, I, I traveled to Paris in, okay, in October. Everybody is wearing a mask in Paris. Every single person has an indoor mask mandate there. Their Omicron cases have skyrocketed exponentially. So you cannot always correlate. An indoor mask mandate is going to correlate with reduced numbers. There are several countries, in fact, in the European Union that instituted indoor mask mandates, just to get to your point that we don't look beyond Maynard. I actually was looking at even international data when I was making my decision. To actually vote against the order because I didn't want people to get a false sense of security. I mean, France has actually been elevated to a level five do not travel advisory. Because of COVID. And again, I, people were wearing, and nobody was wearing a cloth mask in France. Everyone was wearing. You know, surgical style masks. In fact, you couldn't even get on the plane without wearing a surgical mask. So I think the point is that, you know, there is a science related to this new variant that we need to recognize. And just as I work in environmental field, I've been over twenty years, I'm OSHA certified, I'm extremely familiar with. PP and respiratory protection, just as I know, I cannot open a drum of, you know. Hazardous waste or mercury waste, or I can't go to a lead or an asbestos site. I cannot put on a surgical mask and expect that I'm protected. Like I have to recognize that there are things that I need to do to better protect myself. And I, again, I don't, in good conscience, I didn't want to give people in this town. The sense that, oh, if everybody's wearing masks, we're all protected and we're gonna flatten the curve. That's just, you know, unfortunately with this particular variant. That's just not what the data is showing, especially even some international locations. So. Again, I'm not an anti-masker. I'm not telling people they shouldn't wear masks, but I saw a lot of people wearing masks. Before put in this order, you know, I see, I saw a lot of voluntary mask wearing. And there are just so many mental health issues affiliated with this pandemic. At, I mean, there's people have so much anxiety, there's depression, there's isolation, there's sadness. I just thought that the order. Could potentially have exasperated those conditions and made people feel like things were just getting worse and more hopeless. And I just, I, I, I see public polarization. We've gotten so many criticisms against this mandate, which, mind you, I didn't. A support. It's, it was a two to one vote. It was not a three to zero vote. And I made my decision based on like fact, science and trends even in other countries. So just to, you know, just to point out that like when you say we're not looking beyond Maynard, I just, that's not true. And there is a particular science to this Omicron variant that people needs to be aware of. And you need to do, you have to do, you have to protect yourself as you need to. Again, if you're around immunocompromised people. Or you're around elderly parents or relatives that have medical conditions, like you need to do what you need to do to protect yourself. You can't just rely on it. You know, a townwide mask order and think everything's going to be okay. And I was also concerned about the fact that. I go to a health club where there's a lot of wealthy people and they can afford to buy N ninety five masks. There's a lot of lower income people who cannot afford those masks. And I don't want people thinking that like there's some, you know, social inequity where, okay, I guess if I, if I have money, then I can be protected. I just, there's just so many things that I had personally felt and researched that I didn't support that order. And that, you know, and again, I, I know that there is this subset of people in town, including yourself, Jeff, who I'm sure are highly critical of me as. I can see on your Facebook page and I just, it was very disappointing to see you so critical of the Board of Health. And in that, in that social media forum, it was so inappropriate and just so distasteful. That you were using your position and, you know, like Kathy said, we've done so much work. We have a, a new health agent who needs to focus on a lot of other issues in town besides mask enforcement. You know, we have. We have limited resources and we have housing complaints, we have food safety issues. You know, we do have mental health issues in town. We have environmental complaints, dumpster complaints, those all can have very serious consequences. And. You know, we want to make sure that our resources are focused on the right things. And, you know, chasing down somebody who has a mask below their nose in. Market Basket over a housing complaint from someone who's inhaling toxic mold. I'm sorry, I just don't see the public health benefit to that. So. Some of your criticism, again, on your January sixth post, I just thought was very distasteful. And I don't know if you're apologizing if your previous apology was for that, but I, I noticed also a lot of misinformation in there. And I'm not trying to personally attack you, but you need to be careful like what you're sharing with the public and in what forum. And if you're doing it as a private citizen versus a member of the town. So just wanted to state that.
You just literally.
Jeff, Jeff, go ahead and make a comment. I think we probably should wrap this up because it's nine o'clock and we've been at it for. Quite some time and we still have some more business to go. But Jeff, finalize your comment.
You just literally personally attacked me, Lisa, and I've strived to, to make sure that anything I said is factually accurate. And I'm happy to take any specific. Complaints offline, the inaccuracies I referred to, I, I covered earlier in the meeting about the vaccination rates and explained why that was a very important thing to me. And I, I, going back to your. Um, and I, I, going back to your initial point, you made a lot of points right there in a row. It was hard to keep track of all of them, but of that, I, I really don't think anybody is saying, oh, we have a mask mandate now. I don't have to do all this other stuff. And in terms of making people feel safer and secure, I really do think that some people who are vaccinated and, and are taking care of themselves when they walk into Market Basket or other public spaces and see now a much fuller compliance, uh, of, of people masking and taking the pandemic seriously, that grants security or peace of mind in regards to the anxiety uh, and the concern over the reports we're seeing again from the CEO of Emerson Hospital. So this isn't some faraway place, but local concerns over hospital capacity, the National Guard being called in to plug the staffing shortages that Kathy mentioned. Um, but, all right, David, I do have, um, a, a few more questions, uh, getting away from the mask mandate. Um, but, um, did the Board of Health ever discuss other potential policies? And especially being we're relying so much on the vaccination rate, um, such as requiring a proof of vaccination at places where masking isn't possible, such as restaurants?
We have, um, my personal opinion, and I believe we've all expressed this, um, it, it's, how do I wanna put this? Um, there are a lot of counterfeit cards out there. So how are you gonna tell which is which? Um, I think it's almost discriminatory in a, in a way. Um, they, um, you know, if you go out to dinner and you can't take your kids because they're not vaccinated or, um, your parents because they can't be vaccinated because they have health issues, I think those all have to come into play with this. Plus the fact of, it was on the news this week. Restaurants are now just doing takeout because they don't have the staff to check that um, on a daily basis of patrons coming in. Um, we will discuss it further at the next meeting. Um, but right now, none of us have, have decided to put anything like that in place. Um, I know when they did it in Salem, the, because they touristy cities that these are going into, uh, that they're using them. Um, the restaurant, um, they didn't have the patrons. They left the, the city of Salem to go eat. Um, I don't know, not that that should be a reason at all. Um, but I, I feel, I would feel bad having our own businesses lose because of that when some of them, a lot of them have the partitions up or, you know, um, and they're trying to space people apart again. Um, but we will discuss it again at the next meeting, the end of the month.
Well, Kathy, the sanctuary, they, the sanctuary, it's called the sanctuary, it's like.
They have one, right.
Had one, and I, no, I, I, I know that people who wanted to go there, you know, showed their, and they had a right to do that. So a restaurant, um, and I think Jeff might be right in that point, but a restaurant has a right to ask, to show proof of vaccination if they should so choose. Uh, we don't, you know, uh, that's what they, they're doing in France. They can do that here if they, if they want.
Yep, yep, Jeff, you were gonna say.
No, I, I just, just a, a couple of points. I think you could write the exemption for kids based on the lower risk to them, um, and increase the opportunities for kids to get vaccinated. But if somebody can't bring their parents there because they're not vaccinated, that would be incredibly unsafe to begin with, wouldn't it?
Right, right. But I'm just saying, if you, you know, just as an example, um, but, and, and the kids with the Omicron, they're getting it. They're not getting sick. Um, my great nephews all have it. They're home with a little tickle cough. Um, you know, but it is a high rate for nursery school age children. Um, that's where some of the clusters are coming from. So, um, all that has to be taken into account, um, to, to discuss this and look at it. Um.
Okay, um, what factors is the Board of Health gonna be looking at for the removal of the mask mandate?
The lower numbers. If there's a drop in numbers. The, um, the COVID nineteen.
Case rates or, or hospitalizations or other metrics, just your cases?
Well, we, we will look at all of it. We get all that information, but for here, it's the number of cases, right?
Actually, just a quick question about point of order there. Um, so do we get notified of hospitalizations of Maynard residents? Or is that, or we just get positives of just positive results?
We get just positive results.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to double check that. All right. Thanks.
Yep. So, okay, um.
Just the last question.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so again, I, I feel when, and, and I do appreciate that the introduction that you gave, um, this evening, uh, before we were allowed to ask question was, um, much more comprehensive than August. So I do appreciate seeing that difference there. Um, my question is, how can we be prepared? And, because I think, I think there's a lot of wishful thinking that this is last variant, hopefully, and I hope everybody is right in that, but I think there is a significant chance that there could be another variant. Maybe it's a fifty fifty shot. Um, and I think, you know, people say that as variants go on, they tend to get milder, but that is by far from a rule. So I think we got lucky that Omicron, you know, was, uh, less likely to cause severe disease. And the problem is it's much more transmissible, but there's no guarantee that the next variant couldn't be transmissible and deadly. So hopefully, we don't have to deal with that. But if it is a significant probability that we do have to deal with that, how can we be more prepared to be nimble in terms of our implementation of policies in the future?
Um, I think that we would, if it's, if it's a high rate again, um, infection rate, um, then my suggestion would be to put the mask mandate in to encourage people to be vaccinated and boosted. Um, and, and to be responsible for your own actions. And that's what the government and the state government is trying to push so that people are responsible and responsible for the, the next person for, you know, to them. So, um, I'm hoping there's not another variant. Um, there was a scientist, um, that stated in twenty twenty that there were eight variants of COVID nineteen, praying that they don't come out, praying that with our vaccination rates and doing what we're doing, we can quell this. So, but until we have a worldwide vaccine, we won't have herd immunity. So, yeah.
So it'll be around for a while, unfortunately.
I, I'm praying it won't be. I really do pray every night that this is it and we don't have to deal with this anymore. Um, we all have, you know, children, grandchildren, elderly parents, family members, um, that we need to be concerned with. I, I'm immunocompromised. So, um, and even more so after my latest vote. So, um, so I, I, I do watch it and I, I try to be aware of what's going on and where it's coming from and where it's going. So, yeah.
Yeah, Kathy, I've also read that some medical researchers have indicated that the Omicron variant actually needs to run through a large part of the population in order to transition from pandemic to, you know, endemic status. And it could potentially, you know, it's good, just like we're seeing in other countries, there's a spike of getting worse before it gets better. And that is just the science of it and we can't change that. And, you know, we are in tough position, we're doing the best we can. And, um, I just wanna make sure, again, for future, Jeff, I don't know if you're gonna be posting any more information, um, related to the health on behalf of like in a town capacity. Um, you know, we're happy to review information for you before you post it. Um, I just don't wanna see the public getting information from a select board member that may or may not be accurate. Um, so I, I just like to know.
On another note, for Europeans, I heard tonight that, um, the England has stopped all masks, not forcing vaccinations, any of that as of today.
And there are a bit of us in terms of the Omicron surge, correct?
Right. So we will see, because you know that's gonna go up, if they're not forcing anything on people. How true it is, I don't know. I did hear it on the news tonight. So, um, it could have been one of Boris's jokes, who knows, you know? But I hope not. Um, so, um, with that.
There's just one, just with what Lisa just said, the one thing that I really didn't appreciate is to say that we can't do anything because I think there are a lot of things that we can do, both individually and as a community. Um, if you're not vaccinated, getting vaccinated, and if you're eligible for a booster, getting booster, those are the most important things. So we can do things, masking, testing, social distancing, where appropriate, all important things. So I, I don't think the correct response to Omicron is to say we can't do anything. I, I.
I think I was pointing out the science of it, Jeff, based on trends in other countries. Um, the science is, you know, it is, it is what it is. That's what, that was like, that's what I was pointing out. I, I do feel like you do sometimes twist our words and you misrepresent us. And again, uh, I, you know, I, I guess you have, you have an agenda and you're, this is what, but, you know, we, we, we need to be careful, we need to just.
There was a.
We have responsibility to the public and you need to be careful what you're posting on Facebook.
And there was an apology earlier, um, for some, for his comments. So, um, with that, I think we will close the Board of Health meeting. Um.
Yeah, before you do, Kathy, I just wanna say, um, again, as I began this conversation with saying my personal thank you to the three of you and to John for the work that you've done to, um, to help us through this crisis as we end. Uh, you know, I, I look forward to working with you all as we move forward so that, again, we can work as a community and work as a team to, um, you know, do what's best for our community and to make sure that, um, you know, that, that, that we move forward with a healthy, with a healthy community. So thank you all and.
Thank you for inviting us, David.
Kathy, I think there's a public comment.
Yes, sure.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Tan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Honggang Tan. I'm not a residential Maynard, but I'm a parent of a student who's a, who's in the Margaux School. The Margaux School is located in Maynard, so I'm a stakeholder. Uh, I'm just wondering, um, if your mask mandate include private schools? Because it said public, uh, business premises, does it include private schools? Because private schools are still a public spaces, a lot of people are going there. Um, uh, and I talked to their board of directors, they issued a optional mask policy. So under that policy, a large amount of people inside the building don't wear any masks. My daughter is the only one who's wearing a mask in her classroom, so we don't feel safe to be in there. So, uh, but I, I asked them, they said, no, we are not included in the mandate because we are a private school, we are not a business. So I'm just wondering if that's true or not.
The school is not open to the public, right?
Uh, as far as I know, they rent the building, they, they didn't rent the whole building. Uh, they, they don't own the building, they rent the two floors and one great hall in the first floor. And it doesn't include, uh, other rooms in the first floor. So I think the building, um, belongs to a church and other church people, or I don't know, whoever can enter the building. Actually, at this moment, anybody can enter the building.
John?
Uh, yeah, can, so, um, we have heard about this, we've had this concern raised. Uh, and so it's difficult to comment at this time because we're, uh, checking with town council on what, you know, what's appropriate there. Uh, so we're working on it, we, we don't have a response at this moment.
Okay, okay. So, but we, we cannot wait because there was an outbreak right after the Thanksgiving. So I'm, I'm afraid there is another outbreak is waiting there. So, uh, please give us response as quickly as possible. Thank you.
We will. The, the problem is that the school does not fall under DESI, so we have to check it out. What, what can be done? So, um, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Tan, for your concrete question.
Thank you. We will get back to you, Mr. Tan.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you again, David, for inviting us.
Thank you, members of the Board of Health, and thank you, John, and, uh, we'll continue the conversation.
We will. Okay.
Be healthy, everybody.
A motion to close the Board of Health at nine nineteen second?
Second.
Okay, in favor, Lisa?
Jody? Yes.
And I'm in favor. Have a good night, people.
Thank you, you too.
You too. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, um, next topic on the agenda is item number fifteen, the proposed marijuana delivery operator at two to six Powder Mill Road. And Greg, you were gonna speak to us about, I think, some of the conversations that you've had with town council about, um, you know, moving forward with a, uh, with a host community agreement and how it mixes in with a potential development agreement for the property, et cetera. So why don't you give us a little bit of background?
That's exactly right. So this is a, a, as the board is very well familiar with, a very complex, uh, proposal scenario uh, that's dealing with multiple parcels and a relatively new, um, um, approach to the industry, that it's a delivery operator, not a retail operator. Um, and the board has given a lot of good feedback as to some of its, uh, preferences and expectations of that business. Um, so we worked with town council, Kate Federoff, uh, is the, uh, is the attorney, uh, for that topic. And she met with myself and Megan Zamudo and, uh, Bill Nemser. So we're trying to, to sort of like incorporate all the, the preferences, um, of the board regarding specifically the host community agreement. And then it very quickly became evident that it's really gonna be a development agreement. Well, in all likelihood, it'll, it'll be a development agreement as well, um, to really kind of meet what the, uh, the, the preferences of the select board are. Um, however, I am not trying to be insubordinate, trying to be respectful to the wishes of the, of the board. The board had indicated its preference to negotiate as a board in public. And that is possible, but difficult and challenging, especially because of the challenges of the complexity of these two parcels and the proposals. So it's not, because again, it's difficult to just isolate just the host community agreement. Um, if it was just that, that was a agreement that we have, that we've had for the other, uh, retail establishments, um, it's pretty sound and it's, and it's pretty thorough. But we are trying to tie the expectations of that host community agreement in with the development agreement and sort of like meet the, the goals of, of the entire intersection, the corner. Um, so therefore, I'm asking the board if the board would consider designating, kind of go to like a more traditional approach to negotiations. And, and again, I understand the intentions of the board was to have everything very transparent and very open. Um, but I am asking the board now to consider a more traditional route for negotiations to, to members, uh, to serve as, um, liaisons to a negotiations team, um, for the host community agreement and in all likelihood, a development agreement. So you don't have to answer me tonight, but I, I'm, I would like the, the board's guidance.
Go ahead, go ahead, Jeff.
Um, sorry, uh, who else besides the two select board members would be on the negotiation team?
Myself. So in the, it's my job to negotiate on behalf of the board, so I'm, I'm kind of by default. Um, but Kate Federoff is still gonna be our, our lead. It will probably also involve Megan Zamudo, because she's been our, she's been my point person for the host community agreements in particular. Um, I'll probably also have to rely on, on, uh, Bill Nemser if it goes into the, um, development agreements because I'll need to have the, the zoning, the town tone overlay, the mixed use, the, there's, there's so many, uh, complex complexities to this project. So the usual staff, um, but I, right now, I haven't reached out to other members, if you, of the public, if that's what you're asking, like, no, so.
I, I was, that was a purely curiosity question, not, not to any particular members.
Okay.
And are you proposing two members, two different members, so two members for the first team and then two different members for the second team, or is it the same members for both?
It's, you say members, it's convenient that way, but I didn't, I, in case the board felt otherwise, I didn't wanna, but my preference is the same too.
Um, my question, part of it was answered. And I, I guess the second part of, part of it is frustration over, um, you know, we talk about these as being negotiations and, and one of the, um, one of the captures for executive session is negotiations. But I understand that in this instance, it doesn't, it does not qualify for an executive session because that would allow then the board to have, uh, discussions about, uh, you know, our negotiation tactics, our negotiation desires, et cetera, uh, with. uh, you know, our negotiation tactics, our negotiation desires, et cetera, uh, without harming our negotiation position. Um, we could do it privately without harming our negotiation position and then have a team go out and negotiate. Um, I understand that it doesn't fit into the category, or at least that's the way it's been described to me before. That we cannot do that. Um, so that's frustrating for me. Um, but, you know. Uh, I, I understand for expediency purposes, it makes sense to select a, a subgroup to, to engage in those discussions. Personally, I'm not interested in participating. I, I've said my piece on this project and, uh, you know, it, it can move forward without my participation at that level. It was a board, it was a board member, board conversation, it would be a different issue, I'd participate, but.
And I, I think that, you know, I, I appreciate, um, the reasoning behind this. And, and I actually do think that it's, it's a good idea. Um, you know, I'm, I don't necessarily need to serve on it, um, but I'm happy to if I, if I'm needed or, um, but I'm, I'm definitely not opposed to this.
Chris, what are your thoughts? You were the one who wanted to pursue it as a team. Or the one who led that. I shouldn't say the one who wanted to. You were the one who, who sort of drove that bus.
Yeah, I was driving. I, I, I mean, I. I was driving that bus. Um, but no, I mean, it, if this, if, if as a group, we decide it's, it's better to have a, a smaller group and two is the number, I'm okay with that too. I just, I think in the past, some of the, um, somebody, you know, HCA's have come to us post-negotiation. And I'd rather not have the five of us get the information post-negotiation. I'd rather have at least some of us involved. That, that's really my, my point. And if it's two or five or three or four, I don't think it matters. So long as we have a, a voice at that table before it gets to the point where we've received it in the past. That's all. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Armand or Jeff?
No, I, I, I have no problem with, um, designating two, um, uh, the, the, for the three who would not be on, um, I just want to make sure that they will eventually have an understanding of kind of what I'm, I'm trying to express this. So of, of all the things that are going back and forth, some of the details that didn't quite make the cut, um, will we have an understanding of that? From the end product.
Well, I, I would think that whoever the two are are going to be representing, you know, the board. So, yeah. We should, we, we're going to have to go along with whatever the two negotiate.
No, I mean, well, that's somewhat, but then, um,
you know, it's going to come back to us. Right. It's going to come back to us, right, to the five of us after the negotiation is completed. So.
Yep.
And, and correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, Greg, but you know, when, when it does come back. You know, you might not, I'm not sure about how the negotiations actually work as far as this part goes. Um, but you might not be able to share updates while negotiations are ongoing. But once they've, once they've, once we have a host community agreement that we're willing to, to bring forward. Um, I would assume the members could share their reasonings why something was or was not included in the HCA. Would that?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Well, here's one comment, and I don't want to, I don't want to drag this conversation out tonight because I think we understand that it will be a, uh, two-member committee that will go along or two-member appointed to go along with Greg and Megan and the rest. Um, one of the things, this is just an example of one of the concerns that I have relative to this. Is one of the concerns that Justine raised a couple of meetings ago. And she said that she really wanted to have a focus of, uh, of part of the insistence. And if I misrepresent Justine, please jump in. And I know you would. Um, but that the delivery and the pickup of the product would be inside the building.
Correct.
So I went over to the building and I looked at it. And in the back area where this whole, uh, production is supposed to take place are not garage doors, but rather loading docks. It's not, there would have to be changes to this building. Structural changes to this building in order to have a garage door going in. Now, there is a garage door closer to the front of the building towards the street side. However, one of Jeff's concerns that he commented on during the discussion was that we want to have two commercial properties in the front of the building where the area is there in the front. Well, if you have garage door where the garage door is, you can't have a, a, a commercial property in the front of the building. Because fifteen feet away is a garage door. So you'd have a fifteen-foot buffer between the front door of the building and where the garage door is for delivery and, and pickup. So I think there's a concern from my perspective about what we're being told they can and can't do. And again, this goes back to my frustration of the discussion as we were going along. They don't know what they can and can't do because it was just, yes, yes, we can do that, we can do that, we can do that. Look at the building and realize that some of the stuff that we're being promised can't be done. That's all I'm saying. And I believe that Justine did say that she really wanted to have all the stuff being done inside. Can't be done unless they change the building. And if they don't, then Jeff's not getting his, his walk-up businesses in the front. Because you can't have a garage door right behind fifteen feet behind the front door of your barber shop.
I was, I was under the impression that they would use that garage door on the side that you're talking about. So, and it could very well be that that's not. And so I guess that will be what we, what gets flushed out during.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, okay.
Isn't the door the intent to use down back where the land flattens out?
That's what, that's what I thought. But when you go back there, they told us, they told Justine the last time they met with us that, oh yeah, we're, we're going to, we'll have the drive-in and everything will be done inside. Not if that's what, not if it's consistent with what you believe the building will be like and what the product with the, the thing will be. But again, I don't want to rehash. That's just a simple example of where the problems are. That we're talking about things that just cannot happen if you look at the building. So, uh, we'll select the two people tonight or, uh?
There's no, there's no like timeline, if you will. I mean, like, uh, the, the attorney is representing the client of, they're on. So I'm sure they would love to move this forward, but there's like, I was asking the board to consider it. If you want to designate two, you can. If you want to put it off, we're.
Well, 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 if, I don't think we have a consensus on who those two people will be. Um, so let's put it on the agenda to select two people. You now, we now know what you are interested in doing. And we will, we will have a discussion on who those two people will be and why.
Has, uh, do you, do you want to find out, David, if anybody, because I know like I, I mentioned that I don't think I can do it. You mentioned that you're not interested. Do you want to see if other people are interested? So we can.
Out of the three, it would be Chris, Armand and Jeff.
It, it all depends on what time of the day they're planning a meeting. That's my concern.
Like, I would mind. Convenient time. That's what I, I, uh, I love daytime meetings. I love, uh, you know, like, no. So Armand, of course, like I would try to be as like accommodating, which I'm sure the attorneys would too, who are, who are on. But, um, no, I, I, if I could have a daytime meeting at, at, at a perfectly convenient time for everybody, that's my, that's my choice. Less night meetings. Uh, but if you can't do it, if you can't do daytime meeting, then yes, we will do nighttime meetings.
Is, is it safe to assume that it will be a combination of Zoom and in-person meetings or all Zoom?
Probably going to be Zoom at the beginning.
Probably mostly Zoom, but I, I am actually, I do love the idea of getting on site. So I, for a, a little fact-finding, if you will. Um, I always like kind of going out there and seeing it. And then, and then you kind of get the best from both parties, what their intentions are. Um, and then that can inform negotiations. But otherwise, probably by Zoom, Kate Federoff probably would prefer by Zoom alone. Um, and with, uh, and, and with, uh, those of us with babies who could get sick at any time. Um, Zoom is.
You just had a Board of Health meeting, Jeff, Greg, and you're, and you, you want to have these live meetings with wearing masks.
And I, uh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm all zoomed out too. I believe me, but I, I do appreciate the, uh, I do appreciate the, the protections that, uh, that it affords.
So I don't think we have a final group.
Well, I don't, I don't mind volunteering with, you know.
I should, should let Chris chime in first before I did.
I'm sorry.
Chris, do you have any strong desire to be on this team? I know you were pushing for the full board, making sure that we had a representation on the negotiation committee.
Man, I, I have the time. I, that's not a problem, but.
Then, then do it, Chris. And you go ahead.
I'm going to go hang around the koi pond out back.
Hey, koi pond. You can make a lot of money.
No, I, I, I don't have, I don't, I don't have a problem doing that. I, you know.
Oh, good.
I'll, I'll let Armin and Chris take it then.
All right, there's your team.
Congratulations. No. Uh, Dan, we don't need to vote on that, right? Just as it does.
We do not. It's. Greg, do you want an appointment?
It's probably a good idea for the official purposes. Let's, let's get a vote on the, on the books to say like these, yeah, that's probably a good idea. None, it's always good to vote just to be for the minutes alone.
Go ahead, Justine.
I will move to, okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Jeff. I will move to designate, uh, Krista Silva and Armin DiBarcarian to serve on negotiations team in the development of a host community agreement as applied for by UPA Inc. and the development of the development agreement relative to two-dash-six Powder Mill Road and its vicinity.
All second.
Okay.
Um, and so we'll do a roll call. Justine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
All right, thank you.
All right. Uh, item numbers, item number sixteen is the hometown hero's phase two. And quite frankly, I don't know if I should turn this over to Justine and Chris or, uh?
Actually, also Kim, Kim Lally is here. Kim Lally is on, um.
Hi, Kim.
And, um.
Sorry to keep you so late.
It's okay. We had a conversation a couple of meetings back. And, uh, we were talking about, you know, whether they should, whether we need to formalize the committee again, whether we need to do anything in particular. And so, um, Greg had put it on the agenda. So I reached out to Kim to see if she wanted to update us to see what else we need to do. Okay, so we've been meeting the last, um, couple of months. We got together, actually got together in November. And we have put together a phase two plan that is for people to purchase a banner is our second part of this. As you all know, the first part is all the killed in action veterans in town, downtown. So I've been in touch with Justin, um, to find out what the logistics are as far as the amount that DPW might be able to handle. And he told us that between forty and fifty, uh, more banners would be a possibility. Um, obviously we still need to work with him on that. We weren't sure if we still need, if we need to again, get permission to use the telephone poles. Um, or if that's just something that, or how, I don't know how that happens, what works with that. That's, that was one of our questions and we, we, we have a form that we've almost got completed at this point to, to put the information out there for people to purchase a banner. And the, that should be done within the next week. To get the information out to everybody, we're going to use the newspapers, the beacon and the action and try to and, and also work if we can with the veterans agent. And maybe through senior housing, try to get the information out as many places as we can, library, posters, that kind of stuff. So that people will know about the program and how it's going to be, how it works.
Yeah, a quick question. Do, are you aware if the, um, the purchase of a banner is limited to a resident of Maynard? Or a, that, uh, they're a parent of a resident of Maynard? Or does the veteran have to be a, at one time was a resident of Maynard?
What we've tried to, to do with that is to say that they were a resident of Maynard when they were in this service and, when they were doing their service. And hopefully, I know there's going to be some question from people about that, but we were trying to make it as fair as possible to keep the residents to be able to have, to have a banner. Now, I know in other towns, um, I don't know if it was Justin, I think it was Justin that told, that worked in Marlboro, was it? Yeah. So, um, Justin has, I don't know if Marlboro was one of the ones that you worked with that they only did, they did a banner for one year that people, and then they switch over to another year if they had more people that were, that wanted banners. Is that, do you know if that's how they worked?
Yeah, Kim, we, uh, before I left, we, we were on phase three, phase four. Uh, we had so many applications. I mean, you're talking about a city of forty thousand plus, um, where we ended up getting to a point where, um, we were limited what the DPW could do and the locations that we could apply them. Uh, so we started doing a yearly lottery. And then at the end of the year, after the banners were put up, they were gifted to the family for, you know, safekeeping. There, and they can do what they want. I'm not sure we're at that point yet with Maynard. Um, and then, you know, if it, phase two for your project will really start to call this out when you receive applications.
Right.
When I came into Maynard, phase one was really KIA's. So you're not talking about really a lot of active family members putting in applications.
Yeah.
Once you start doing the application process, you, you got to kind of gauge how many you get. And then it starts to develop what the process looks like. So if you only receive forty and we only, and we have forty to fifty spots, then you can put them up and leave, and they can go up every year. But if you start to see eighty, a hundred, two hundred, and we only have forty spots, then I think the committee would, you know, kind of look at that as a whole. I can also, yeah, I can also answer your question, Kim, regarding uh, the utility polls. If the town is looking to use utility polls, they are actually owned by EverSource. And we do need to secure permission in advance. As long as they're identified by the committee. If you forward them to me, I will talk to our representative at EverSource, which we did last time. So if you, if you know our phase one doesn't just include the light poles downtown that the town owns, but it does go down Main Street and hit some utility poles. And we did secure, uh, rights to that.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I thought we did the last time. I wasn't positive, um, exactly how we did it. So we'll, what we, our thoughts are to have the gateways coming into, into Maynard to be our next, um, poles that we'll use. So it would be like from root, but like where alumni field is where the, that light is. And then out different ways to see, so more people coming into town will be able to see the poles. And one of the things that Justin had said too is that having them on those streets is, is more work because they're more spread out, obviously, for the DPW to do. But they, Justin, you said you felt we could handle the forty to fifty, um, more. Cause that'll be in addition to the ones downtown, obviously.
Yeah, because, yeah, so I can kind of speak to that, at least for the board to understand the operational ask of the DPW. Because we don't do a seasonal banner change out and we rarely only put up the veterans banners once and they stay up from Memorial Day pretty much to Veterans Day. And there's not a constant operational requirement. That's why we're able to support this. But just keep in mind, if there is a banner program and you're approached by many other committees, that will become an operational cumbersome for the DPW because then it's constant changeover. Um, I do recommend the committee look at, you know, when you're talking about utilizing Great Road and Parker Street, look at larger banners. So the banners that you were put in place in regards to phase one, they were boxed in based off of the antique light poles, infrastructure and what their constraints were. But typically, when you talk about Great Road, Parker Street, what you're talking about areas where you have thirty-five, forty-five mile an hour speed zones, it's very hard to see and decipher banners that small. Um, if you haven't had a chance, drive through the center of Bolton, you will see banners that are, uh, almost four by four. And they are very, very visible on the utility poles, um, and they kind of capture the island better.
Okay. Yeah, so as far as any other things that we need, I think that, I don't think we need anything else. Um, the only other thing that we had thrown out there was possibly getting in touch with, um, the, yeah, digital, the, the new place up there, the new parking space area, Parker.
One twenty-nine Parker.
One twenty-nine Parker. Why can't I get it out? To see if, if that, they had any, um, if they wanted to handle themselves, this wouldn't be the town doing it, but them to handle doing some banners there. If they have some residents that are living up in that, up in the apartments and stuff that might be interested in having something. But that's, I just wanted to let you know that that is something that we were considering to look into. Um, is there anything else that you can, oh, I know, I know one of the other things was that if, if we plan to have the banners only up for one year, we need to, um, we, as a committee, we need to figure out how to. we need to, we, as a committee, we need to figure out how to charge for the, because we're going to charge the people to buy these banners. And if they're only going to be up for a year, then we would probably need to do, either do more fundraising to pay for brackets and the American flags and stuff that go on there. Or we'll have to or if there's any grants or anything that are available to, to, to help with that, that we could possibly apply for brackets. So we wouldn't have to pass that on to first people that buy them, to buy the banners.
The, how long do the banners themselves are expected to last while, while outside? Is it, is there any degradation of the banner itself we're worried about in that aspect?
I can answer this, Kim. So the company that we guided the committee to when it, when it first started is a very highly reputable company. They're actually the company that started doing the hometown heroes banners. And the vinyl that I kind of indicated to the committee, the vinyl that we currently have as our phase one is designed UV resistant. And they have a life expectancy of five to ten plus years, depending on, you know, where they are in regards to sun exposure. So they're, they, they hold up pretty well.
That's good.
I know we do, we still have some money in our, in the account that we originally had, was, was doing fundraising in. So we have that money that we could start with. I don't, but do you know if there's any grants or anything that we could possibly apply for that would for the brackets? Is there any out there? I don't know of the towns.
There's grants for everything, but I think more, you know, you're looking at you know, veterans organizations that are national that, that are, are around, might be the way to go to tell them that, you know, this is what we're interested in doing. Who, who knows what's out there, you know, from from VFW places, even though we don't have one in Maynard, but we, you know, the the, you know, you name it. Just get out there, but, but what is it that you need from us at this point, other than our blessing to go ahead and, and start soliciting for, you know, people to to donate or to, you know, purchase for their family member?
I think at this point, it was mostly to make sure that we were, that we knew where we were supposed to be going as far as getting the permission, which Justin, Justin just answered. If there's anything that we need to know as far as anything that you want us to do or want us to make sure that we do or don't do.
I think the one question is probably the, is the fundraising aspect itself. I don't know if, and I think Greg, I think that was one of your, your questions as far as, you know, we wanted to kind of solidify this for Lori. Is when the money comes in, so are, are you gonna do, do you want a separate account for phase two? I mean, you said you want to kind of keep the money or can, or does it matter to you? Can we just just, and so, and when you do solicit, the money is still going to come to the town hall like it has, like it did for phase one? I guess that's the other question.
Yeah, I, that's what I would say, that that would be the, the best way to handle it. I don't want any of us to be handling the the money part of it. And I don't think there's any reason that it needs to be separated.
Okay.
We did say that we wanted to try to keep money in there in case, especially the KIA's need, any of those banners do need to be replaced for whatever reason that we did have money available to do that.
Is that an offline conversation you can have with the finance team and Greg? Or is that something that the board has to approve?
I'm writing the, I'm writing these notes down right now because I do, I do want to follow up to make sure that whatever the process is, is appropriate, you know, and for, you know, yeah, exactly. I think it's a good question, but no, I don't think we need to hash it out right now because I, I don't want to speak for them.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that we're not doing anything wrong.
No, well, well, the board certainly, I think I speak for all of us, that we certainly appreciate the effort that's going in and, and the way to honor our towns, veterans and those who have served. So thank you. And, you know, certainly feel free to come back whenever, if you have questions or comments or want some support from the board, we're, we're here to help.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, and sorry to keep you so late.
Okay.
All right, item number seventeen is the annual town meeting. God, we're already moving on for articles. Do we have any draft articles on? I don't even have my thing on anymore. It went off.
No, I'll just, it's this, it's the first two we usually knock out. So it's the town report and the obsolete equipment and materials. But yes, it is that time of year already that we're, we're just, if you can knock out some of these easy ones and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all it is.
I just have to go to my hat, damn it. The I don't have it in front of me because my computer went off.
You want me to?
Yes, please.
Read the motion or?
Yep.
All right.
We, we know, we know what they are, right? It's the, it's the two that Greg just mentioned.
Yep.
I'll move to accept and approve draft control A, town report acceptance as shown and move forward to the finance committee for review and comments.
There's a second? Okay, good. Any further comments? All those in favor, Justine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right, we're on our way.
No, no.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, I don't have my thing up.
I'll move to accept and approve draft control B, obsolete equipment and materials as shown and move forward to the finance committee for review and comments.
Second.
Any further comments or questions?
Do we get a list of what the obsolete equipment when is going to be?
Well, I don't know what it is yet. So, so.
Process is just whatever it happens to be is we, we give them authority. Like if there's a typewriter that goes bad, you know, a computer that goes bad or a phone that goes bad.
Right now, right now, the list is obsolete.
Authorizes the sale.
Do we ever, do we ever get a list?
Uh, no, because we don't have very much stuff go out.
Seen a list?
Yeah, I don't think we've ever seen a list.
It's like, if it's a high-end item, then, then we try to do, so we follow the procurement process, which, which requires, you know, disposition of it basically. And usually we give stuff away. So if it's, if like, like if it's a there was a boat, like the, the fire department had that boat that, that we just didn't need. And then I, I believe we gave it to another fire department. Like that's, that's just how it works. It's pretty.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, any other questions? Justine, you look like you had a question?
No, no.
No, okay. We'll vote then. Justine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Is there another one?
No.
No.
Okay. The next thing is the privately sponsored decorations downtown on public property where I think Greg is looking for authority from the board when we've seen it in the recent months when private organizations come in and say, hey, we'd like to put up, you know, lights down on X, Y, or Z. Looking for authority from us rather than having people have to come to us. And then by the time they get to us, you know, Christmas is past or is a day away and it, it doesn't work for them. So that's basically it in a nutshell, Greg.
No, that's it. It seemed to be, there was an indication from the board and, and just to your point. And so if the board wants that policy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. And if there's ever anything that's questionable, you know, we have to expect that you and any future town administrator would say, oh, maybe I should ask the board about that.
Okay.
If, but I would.
I don't like questionable things. You're, to your point, like they, they would have to apply as, as well, like they would, I would have to see exactly what they want to put up.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, okay. So do you want to motion on that for the approval of that policy?
I'll move to authorize a town administrator's office to approve the installation of decorations downtown as applied for by private sponsors.
I'll second.
Any further questions? Seeing none. Justine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Chair report. I have nothing to share this evening. I do appreciate the conversation that we had with the, with the Board of Health. I think it was, I think it was valuable and healthy and I, I very much appreciated that. Other than that, I don't even think there's a meeting coming up this week that I need to even announce about. I don't think so. Nope, I think we're good. So I'm good. Justine?
Not too much. I'll just update a little bit briefly that I've been attending the education visioning sessions for the Green Meadow Building Committee team. And so those have been on Tuesday nights, those last night, the previous week and next week. And it's basically kind of putting together a larger vision of what Green Meadow could be. Kind of philosophically, kind of, you know, what goals might be, what the goals might be in the future. What the community's interests are. There's, there's several people on the committee. I think last night I saw thirty of us on these particular sessions. And they're very clear is that this isn't the end all be all. This is one group that's giving their opinion. From there, they're gonna, they're gonna bring it into the community for the community visioning sessions. So, so there's still a whole process in place. You know, I, I know that the school building committee toured, members did tour the Marlboro Goodnow School last week. I was unable to make the tour, but I heard very good things about it. They are a, a model school that was built by MVG, which is our design architect, design architect. And so I think it kind of gave people an idea of what something could look like, whether it's an ad renault or if it's a new building. And so we're, we're continuing with the process. We have another meeting on Monday, the, the twenty-fifth, I believe. Just the school building committee itself, just kind of update everybody on the process as we're moving forward. So there's, there's a lot going on, but I'm really encouraged by the amount of participation that we're getting from everybody. So I'm hoping that we have a really open and transparent process because I think that that's really, I think that's the goal of the designer and the OPM as well. They're very conscious about keeping the residents. They want to make sure that the residents know what's going on. So we're, we're working on trying to make sure that information does get out to people in a timely manner also.
Thank you for that update. Anything else?
I don't think so. I think that's plenty.
All right. Chris?
Yeah, so I know I sent out an email earlier last week about the Human Relations Committee. I get some responses back, but I think we're going to table that for now and we're going to meet with, there's only three members of that group right now. There's Mike Noble, Elliot Prisby and Caroline Mahidi. And then myself as the liaison to this board. And they're looking for a chair. They're looking for at least a couple more members, maybe four to make it seven. You know, but they're looking for members and they haven't found anybody to raise their hand yet to become a member. And neither of the three sitting members have any interest in being the chair. I know Elliot does not, Mike does not have the time or the, you know, the desire to be, and I've spoken to Caroline at length and she doesn't either. So I think Greg and I and the two of them are going to talk some, someday next week about, you know, where do we seek out, where do they, where do we, where does the town seek out members and you know, where, where can we go with that, that, that committee? So if anyone has any ideas.
Yeah, as an aside, I got a, I got a comment from somebody who I do not know who it is. It might have even been on my, it was on my Facebook page, not by my personal one, the other one. And I instructed her to call Becky. If she was interested, she expressed an interest and then said she couldn't call Becky or something along those lines, but I'm, I'm letting it go because people have to take the initiative on their own. I'm not calling anybody.
I mean, it's, it's, it's been, it's been an interesting relationship with that committee. And that there's been so many things and so many people that wanted to get involved and complaints about different things, but the, the second that you ask somebody to talk to somebody about it, they disappear. And it's, it's been any, any, any number of issues. I mean, you know, there's a, there's a, there's people that have, you know, Maggie Day and, and some of those guys, ladies who have, you know, had issues that they brought before us. And, you know, Indigenous Peoples' Day and some of those things and some of the issues that surrounded Asian hate when we, we had that statement about Asian hate and some of those other things. But other than that, it's, it's been really difficult to get you know, some, some real decent conversation going in that, in that group. And that, that's something that you know, in talking to Caroline within the last couple of weeks, she's just, you know, she just is at her wits end trying to get some appropriate topics that are, fall in line with the mission of the group. So that's kind of what we're going to, I think, talk a little bit about with Greg and, and the other three members and then see where we, see where it goes and try and drum up some new members and some new, not topics, but some, you know, some fresh ideas. One of the things that Caroline spoke about was, you know, trying to get a an active dynamic, a younger chair, someone more in tune with some of the issues out in our community that might, you know, might have a, a, a larger effect on a larger part of the community, which is the young community. So we'll see where that goes. But that's, that's with that. And so my you know, kind of the email that I sent out is kind of changed based on the discussion of the group. So I guess after we, after we speak with Greg and the others, I'll, I'll get back to everybody at our next meeting with the results of that conversation and see, you know, see where we go.
Right. Anything else?
No, nothing else.
Armand?
I just wanted to make a, a small comment in regards to the school administration, just to commend the fact that I think they're doing their best in keeping the schools safe and open. And they need to be commended for all the hard work they're doing. And under the circumstances, I just want to recognize that.
Thank you. Jeff?
The Economic Development Committee met this week. I know there was at least one question about an agenda item for the select board update where they were asking what they need to do to understand how the select board approaches these issues. This was not in response, I asked any particular issue, but just meant to be an open question as events come up. And I did offer if there is a specific topic, if it's appropriate, they could come to a select board meeting if necessary. So there was no specific call out to any specific issue from that agenda item. They also voted to recommend the creation of a, an ad hoc vacant and underutilized property task force. There are some interesting details in that discussion. Roz has some experience with this from her professional life that I think could be quite valuable to us here in town. So that was sent to Greg and that meeting was, let's say Wednesday, that meeting was yesterday. So the Sustainability Committee is ready to go. We were ready to go tonight, but I told David that we could hold off to February, knowing that the meeting was late. There are a couple regional collaborations, one that I just learned about in Stowe. And then also the one for Pepperell, which unfortunately meant tonight, so I couldn't make that one clearly, but we're, we're still moving forward and hopefully at our first February meeting, we'll get to hear more about that. And, but we have all the pre-appointment questionnaires filled out and ready to go. Charter Review Committee is still meeting. Our next meeting is coming up on, I want to say the twenty-six. Joanna and Greg, I'm still waiting on an email on the, some of the potentially outdated roles. You know, the fence viewers, the constables, and just to make sure that we either have somebody in those positions or if any of those need to be changed or, or bumped down to a bylaw in addition to the conversation made earlier about the other list, which is the numbers on the committees. And, you know, so they're, they're, just to give a little bit more detail from the response afterward, there's some consideration, maybe for the more, you know, committees that are dealing with higher level stuff, we don't want to bump some of them down to bylaws, but we also don't want to split. So there, there are some back and forths going on right, right now. And hopefully I'll have more on that particular issue with the numbers after the next update. And then the Budget Subcommittee meeting happened this week as well. It, it, with the market basket, you know, new growth is not present anymore. So I think that, that anticipated decline in new growth is hitting us at the same time as an increase in healthcare costs or some of the drivers that are, are going to mean we have a little bit less flexibility than we've been accustomed to from the past. some of the drivers that are, are going to mean we have a little bit less flexibility than we've been accustomed to from the past couple of years. But I did appreciate the conversation between town staff and ourselves and the FinCom and the school committee. And clearly we'll, we'll see more about that soon and we'll have the tri-board meeting coming up in February. So that's all from me.
You've been busy.
Yeah.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I moved.
All right. Everybody wave. Thank you all. Night, everybody. Take care.